Okay, okay, you guys ready? Okay. Hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, and we're at the Veterans Memorial Building. And it's around 6:00 PM. I see we have a complete contingent tonight, so I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please have a moment of silence? All right, thank you very much. Please stand, face the flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. This is the time period that we normally leave for items that are not on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak to an item not on the agenda, please come forward.
Good afternoon or evening, Bill Martini. I know later on tonight, the land use plan is going to be discussed, and I'll save my comments on that at that point. But one thing on the -- this has to do with the zoning maps. When I was watching the last planning meeting, commission meeting, I noticed on the zoning map and this, again, I primarily speak at the southern end of Main Street, it still showed the current zone, or the map that's being proposed, if I'm not mistaken, showed water lease sites included in the land zoning. It's actually a straight line. This is south Maine between Acacia and south to just about where the bend in the road is going down to the fuel dock. So you'll see it's jagged down there, and that's because it's actually included the water lease sites where it's just kind of something to actually correct the maps. I know I've spoken in the past, because that's a thin strip of about 20 to 30 foot wide, the actual commercial down there. But it, just to get the map corrected, if we're going to do a correct map to kind of take those water lease sites out of your map. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak to items not on the agenda?
My name is Admire Schnetzler, and I live in Morro Bay. I just want to speak in general terms about the Morro Bay Plan and the local coastal program.
Excuse me, we are going to be speaking to that later. Will you be able to attend, or?
Yes, it depends at what time.
We don't know. Probably about 45 minutes or maybe an hour.
Okay.
It all depends on how it goes. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Scott, is there to answer a question on that? Do you want to, on the correctness of the zoning maps?
Yeah, I don't believe, what I was talking with Cindy about was, we talked with Mr. Martini at the county the other day, and I was wondering if that was one of the topics of conversation, related but not the same. So I believe our zoning maps are correct. We, you know, we have land lease sites that are on water and water lease sites that are on land. I mean, some of that stuff becomes an issue there, but I think, I believe our maps are correct. I mean, certainly we'll take another look at it, and Mr. Martini can come down and talk to us and take a look at the maps, and we can go over that with him if he'd like. Be happy to do that.
Okay, yeah, seeing as we're going this upgraded, it'd be nice to have the maps right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have no presentations tonight. And we have the consent agenda. Just approve the minutes as submitted. Do we have any issues on the minutes?
On the minutes that were dated April 17th, there's a reference to the Chevron Track 300 acres. That's actually 3,000. I just, yeah.
Any other corrections? Okay, do I have a, do I have a motion?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second?
I move you second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, passes 5-0. Moving on to public hearings, we have B1, case number UPO-470, CPO-530, and S00-127. This is 2783 Coral Avenue in Morro Bay. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, we do.
Great.
And while that's loading up, there was also the public comment, and there's copies of the two letters we received in the back, and those were emailed directly to all of you. And I received two phone calls, primarily just questions about the subdivision, interest in how the detailed home designs will be, which we're not looking at. We're looking at conceptual designs, so. Have to figure out which way this works. This photo is a photo of the site from San Jacinto and Highway 1. And this is a six parcel residential subdivision. This shows you the zoning in the area. The subject site is ZON CRR, which is Coastal Resource Residential Golf Course Plan Development. And it's surrounded by R2, and then to the east, mixed use, R4, R4 again, and then R1. A little history of Lot 124. This is in the Cloisters subdivision track 1996. It was originally dedicated to the city for future fire station. In 2007, the city determined it would not use the site for a fire station and applied for approval of a six parcel residential subdivision, very similar to the subdivision we're considering tonight. The subdivision was approved by City Council in 2007, but not finalized. In 2016, the city approved the sale contract to the current applicant. In February 2017, the current applicant submitted an application for vesting tentative map, number 2859, which again is very similar to the original map approved in 2007. The submittal is a subdivision within a subdivision. So Lot 124 is already part of the Cloisters subdivision tract, and the proposal is for that lot, which is just under an acre, to be further subdivided into a six parcel subdivision, which is designed as a cluster subdivision, which reduces the impact through internal joint, shared common areas such as open areas and driveway access. So it really reduces the amount of space, and it reduces the amount of curb cuts onto the street that normally a six-house subdivision would have. The new parcels within the subject subdivision will be subject to the same CCNRs, assessments and regulations, including design criteria, as all of the other residential properties within the Cloisters. The dedication agreement from the original subdivider to the city allows for single-family residential use as the only alternative to a fire station. The dedication agreement also allows the city to sell the land or develop the land. And the proposed vesting tract map meets the development standards in the Morro Bay Municipal Code and those within the Cloisters area. Briefly, the development standards overview. There are special development standards for cluster development within the Cloisters area. It limits the height in this area to 14 feet. The setback allowances for cluster development are met by the site as a whole. So the distances for each individual house is not the same as the site in general. So the site meets the front yard, the side yard, the backyard, and the other side yard, and the houses' relationship to each other is not necessarily the same as the standard The proposed subdivision meets all of the minimum lot sizes, which is 6,000 for interior lots and 7,000 for corners. This is a overview of the tract map, and I've identified the trees that are to be removed. There was an arborist report for the original subdivision proposal in 2007 that recommended removal of all of the trees. And after discussion, it was removal of only the trees necessary for the roadway and the home sites. And all of the trees along San Jacinto and Highway 1 are to be preserved. Other studies that were prepared to come up with this application are Monarch Butterfly Survey in 2007, Noise Analysis in 2017, and Soil Study in 2017. This is a landscape plan that shows the outline of the homes that are being submitted for conceptual review. And this shows you the general layout of the site, San Jacinto on the top, Highway 1 on the right, and the single access to Coral Avenue on the left. This is plan number one for conditional approval, and this has been submitted to the architectural design consultant to the Cloisters Architectural Review Committee, and they have approved it with some minor conditions to look further at lighting criteria and to ensure that it meets the Morro Bay development standards and the Cloisters standards. And they have requested that, as all new homes are, it's submitted for review when it's ready for building permit submittal. This is the second plan. It's very similar in design to the first plan, slight changes and a different color scheme. This is the third plan, a little different layout. They're all single-story, and this has another color scheme. This is an illustration that the applicant provided. The top photo is the view from Highway 1 and San Jacinto, looking west across the lot. And the photo on the bottom has the homes shown where they, the height that they will be, how that view will look from the same intersection. And that concludes the presentation, and staff is recommending conditional approval of the vesting tentative map use permit, coastal development permit, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration in Planning Commission Resolution 20-18.
Thank you. Just a little housekeeping item. I've talked to a couple people individually, and I just, I should have brought this up earlier. We were going to be moving item D1 before item B2 on the agenda, so item D1 shouldn't take very long, but I just wanted to let everybody know before we get further into this. Okay, do we, any ex parte communications? Okay. Do we have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I got one. You mentioned that, I remember this project back in 2007, and one of the things, you mentioned that the proposed project had to remove all the trees. There was a, I recall that there was several issues, one of them being that it was a raptor habitat that was going on over there, and then they were going to go ahead and remove the trees, and they stopped some of that.
I think if I misspoke, what I meant to say is the arborist report had recommended removing all of the trees. The submittal to Planning Commission City Council did not remove all of the trees.
Right.
They were trying to retain as many as possible. There is a provision in the Cloisters CCNRs about new plantings of trees having a height restriction. So that was not in the mitigative negative declaration, but that would be something that we want to consider, whether we want to replace the habitat of the tall trees with the replacement trees, or follow the Cloisters criteria for trees that don't grow in height as tall.
Well, how do they mitigate the cutting of the trees that have been cut already?
It's a two-to-one for five gallon, or one-to-one for 15 gallon, and they list recommended species, but it's not specific as to what type of tree should be used to replace.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, has this, this concept been presented to, didn't the Cloisters have some kind of a, like a semi-homeowners association thing, or whatever it is?
It was, the concept plans were submitted to the Architectural Review Committee, and they've approved it with conditions.
Okay, so that's part of that Cloisters tract?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking at the preliminary landscape plan on A4. Does that show the trees that ought to remain and the trees that are being removed?
I think it's clouded, so it doesn't show individually. It shows there's just a cloud of trees. Let's see if I can go back to it.
I see the number seven in what looks to be like the northwest corner of the site.
So this doesn't show the trees in the utility easement along Highway 1. It doesn't show anything there. It shows two big clouded areas on the top of the site plan, and those are representative of the existing trees.
Right. But it's clear that there will be more trees that will be preserved than those two little clouded areas. I mean, it's not clear is my point, but I'm listening to what you say.
Yeah. I'm sorry, we had two conversations going.
Oh, I was saying, I'm listening to you saying that there will be additional trees preserved, but the map seems by this clouded area only to indicate the trees in the northwest corner of the property that are being preserved. That's not correct.
That's not correct. But this map shows nothing in the other area.
Right.
So it's on the tract map sites more, in more precise detail.
Okay, well, I think those trees in the centroid of the lot are going to be removed.
Correct.
So of those, only the trees on the perimeter are going to remain. So was this, was this noticed throughout the Cloisters, or was it required to be noticed throughout the Cloisters?
No, this, the legal requirement is 300 feet, and we noticed 500 feet and put two signs on the site.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
I just want to be clear, the way I'm reading this is the way that has been chosen to handle the requirement about when you exceed five units or more with affordable housing is there's an in lieu agreement. And the approximate value of that is about $90,000? Is that what I'm understanding?
It would be 10% of the average total cost per one house. So you would take the cost of the site, hard costs, soft costs, permit fees, consultant costs, and for the entire development, and divide it by six, and then take 10%.
And that's in lieu of one of these units being advertised as affordable.
Correct.
Dedicated as well. And the other thing I was interested in was the impact fees for the utilities going in, because it sort of looks like it, it's very ambiguous as to how that's going to happen at this point. And I know we don't have user fees that reflect, they're getting a bargain, I guess, but I'll stop commenting. But it seems to me there's nothing there that talks about what that formula is for determining the user fees on that at this point.
They'll be paying full impact fees for all of the homes. They'll be paying current impact fees.
Current impact fees.
Which are, yeah, not from when the, not from when the Cloisters was subdivided.
No. Or not from a revised one that might be under consideration.
They'll be paying impact fees based on the current fee schedule, which was adopted for this fiscal year by the City Council.
And then, just to be clear, there's only one tree along Route 1 that's staying, and the other ones that are staying are, is that cluster Commissioner Ingraffi was talking about on the northwest corner. Because it's significant to make sure everybody's aware of how many trees are being lost here. I'm counting one kind of non, maybe it's a eucalyptus on the east side, and then that, those two clusters on the northwest corner. My understanding is everything else is going.
We can ask the applicant to talk more about that, but on the map that I'm looking at, there is more than one tree shown along Highway 1.
And the last question I have is the removal of the trees is part of the subdivision constraints. In other words, it's not a matter of if someone would choose to develop one of these houses in a different footprint, that they could save the tree.
No, I think there is language in there that is, the 17 trees are believed to be necessary to be removed for the access road in the houses. But to me, the way I read the MND, it sounded like it was flexible. If there wasn't a need to remove a tree, then it wouldn't be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What is the required guest parking for the site, for the subdivision? Because we have limited access driveways.
There are guest parking spaces shown, but I.
Yeah, and then four of them are located in the hammerheads for fire turnarounds. So that's my question. Maybe the applicants can address that. So if you look on A3, you see four guest parking spots, and that would typically be the hammerheads that the fire department and emergency vehicles would use to turn around.
I do see that.
So how many baseline guest parking spots would be required for this subdivision?
We're looking it up.
I want to make sure that we're requiring it on that one on Kern. And it's not as long as this.
I'll speak for the record, just so the public knows what I'm saying.
Right.
Scott, what I was saying is it's possible the fire department didn't require a hammerhead because of the length of driveway, I'm just. I think that's likely the case. I was going to look back through the conditions of approval really quick. Also, like our zoning ordinance requires guest parking spaces for this project. There's not a requirement for it, but we wanted to verify, since you asked the question, that there wasn't any specific requirement in the subdivision ordinance for single-family. But there's none in the zoning code.
Okay.
Can we establish that San Jacinto has no public parking along the curb?
I parked there last week when I was putting the signs up, but I didn't see any signs, and it wasn't red.
Okay, you want to research that, and we'll have the, we'll open public comment, and we'll get back to those questions, and maybe the applicant can bring. So we'll open public comment at this point, and normally we have the applicant come forward first. And maybe you can answer some of these questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Kevin Huber. I'm the applicant for the project. And first of all, I'd like to thank Nancy and Scott and the staff that preceded Nancy. This has been a 22-month process for us, for six lots and houses. With me this evening in the audience is our planning consultant, Dave Watson, and then our left of him is my son Fritz, who works with me, and then Jeff Emrick from the engineering firm, Garing Taylor. Pardon my voice, I'm fighting a little bit of a bug. So first of all, I think we believe the project before you this evening is the best use for this land. It was the city's intended use in 2007. We think it's an appropriate density, given the Cloisters subdivision. The tentative map configuration is essentially the same, as I said, as the map that was approved by the city in 2007, and the home designs are consistent with the Cloisters neighborhood. And they'll actually incorporate not only aesthetically pleasing features, but since the Cloisters was developed, more environmentally friendly features in terms of landscaping and some of the Title 24 issues that go into houses today. As staff mentioned, we've completed the required sequo analysis with a mitigated negative declaration that meets all of the statutory requirements. The project is consistent with the city's general plan and local coastal program. The project is consistent with the city's zoning ordinance. And our lot dimensions and home designs, as was mentioned, have been, received the required approval from the Architectural Review Committee of the Cloisters, and at least from a schematic standpoint, and we'll be resubmitting those when we have final plans prior to issuance of building permits. We agree with all of the findings of the conditions of approval, the recommended mitigation measures, and the mitigation monitoring program is set forth in your staff report. To address a couple of the questions here, Jeff Emrick can address this, but there is no hammerhead there. If you look at the vesting tentative map, those are guest parking spaces. There's one guest parking space for each house, in addition to the garages and the driveways in front of the homes. On the tree removal, there is more than one tree along Highway 1, and none of the trees along Highway 1 will be removed. I believe I counted nine trees along San Jacinto that will remain. And to answer another commissioner's question, the removal of the trees in the center of the site is really necessary for the site work. In order to be able to grade the site appropriately, you wouldn't be able to do that and save those trees in terms of the root structure and everything. So we've offered the mitigation of the one-to-one on a 15-gallon tree and two-to-one on five gallons. My guess is we'll probably go with 15-gallon or larger to have the impact of a larger tree when we open up the subdivision. There was another question regarding nesting habitat, I think, for raptors, and I believe the requirement is that our tree removal can only be done during a time, I think it's July 31st to January 31st or something, where there is not a nesting habitat. If we're doing it outside of that, we actually have to do a study to see if there are any nests at that time, in which case we would not be able to remove the tree while there's a nest in that, in that tree outside of that window of time. So our team here is available to answer any questions that you may have, both about our company, our background, or the project before you this evening, either now or later as you deliberate. And so with that, I respectfully request that you support staff's recommendation set forth in the staff report. I'm available to answer any questions. Again, I apologize for my voice.
Okay, thank you. We'll have further public comment, and we'll probably call you forward afterwards.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, do we have answers to the previous questions?
Guest parking is required in compact infill subdivisions, and this is not one of those because it has full lot size. So there is no guest parking requirement. And the, I think, as he mentioned, it's not a hammerhead, it's less than 150 feet, or the fire department requirement for pulling in and backing out.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have further public comment? Please come forward. Are you able to?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Staff. My name is Dawn Bee, and I actually live in the Cloisters. And so I find it's quite fascinating. I know that legally you don't have to notify very many people, but I can tell you that there are 120 homeowners who are very interested in what is going on out there. And so I'm wondering if I could request that the notification go, at least one person could go to me, and I can distribute it. I don't live within. I don't live within 500 feet. In fact, I'm looking around that area, and probably those homes are vacation homes anyway, so people don't really care. But I'd like to request, and also, Mrs. Sedarski, to your point on the raptors, there are a lot of raptors that do nest in those trees. Yes, technically, July 1st to, well, the end of the year is probably okay, but if they nest there and the trees are there next year, that's not cool. So, I appreciate you bringing that up, because that is an issue. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have other public comment on this item?
Good evening again, Bill Martini. Back in 2007, I believe they had a buyer for this property, they had a tentative map that was approved by the city, and then it was turned down. And the reason the sale fell through, to my recollection, was there was only one remaining right to build in the cloisters, and that's where this hit the wall. And that's where I'm wondering what may have changed now. In other words, I think 120 homes were built, and when the original subdivision was approved, and I think I have my facts correct, that there was only one remaining right to build left in the cloisters. And, again, the buyer went away, the tentative map faded, and I think the city attorney at that time conferred. So, I was just seeing if things changed, or if that's something you may bump into again with the, you know, approval of this subdivision. As far as the subdivision, I'm not pro or con on it, I just thought I'd bring that one point up.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak to this? Okay. Would the applicant please step forward again? I think we probably have a couple more questions. As, I'll start off with one question to begin with. Has a biological study been done? I didn't see it in the negative deck. Are these trees, existing trees, raptor habitats?
I don't recall if they, I don't think they identified any habitat or any nesting in those trees, no.
Was the study done?
Yes.
Okay. And then, if I remember, there was a memory, I have a memory back there, that on the prior subdivision, prior to that subdivision, they removed several trees on the interior, several eucalyptus large trees before they brought the vesting map to us on the previous subdivision. Do we have a historical documentation on any of the previous trees, or do you, from, say, 10, 15 years ago?
I don't know.
I don't either, but I, I mean, I suspect that the original, the 17 count, I think if you go out there, I was out there, I tried to count them from several different angles without getting my feet too dusty. I think the trees were removed. I don't think there are 17 on the site, in the center of the site, any longer.
Yeah. Because that was one of the issues on the previous subdivision. It was one of the issues why it was denied, if memory serves me right, and that was because there was some tree removal prior to, you know, trying to vest the map to make it easier. So, could, further questions?
Well, I just want to make it real clear. One of the, what I remember, recall back then, was they started removing those trees, and there were several citizens that rose up and said, "There's raptor habitat," and helped stop that. So, any kind of biological assessment that says it's not raptor habitat, maybe it hasn't been done for a long enough time.
Michael, you got anything? Joseph? Jesse? Okay, we'll close public comment.
Okay, if I may to address, I think it was Mr. Martin's question regarding the cloisters and the ability to add additional units. We did an exhaustive analysis of the CCNRs and legal review, and determined that this was allowed within the cloisters. And I would just ask that we don't get punished for prior tree removal that we weren't part of. Thank you.
Okay, and so there were the dwelling units allowed in the original cloister subdivision that would allow this, this build-out?
It was, it was not, it was not only allowed, it was contemplated that if the city didn't use it for a fire station, that it would be converted to housing.
Okay.
Yeah, in the deed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, comments, questions? Who wants to go? Jesse?
I have a comment. So, this is city-owned, right? And we're...
Correct.
So, if there was a significant cultural resource encounter on the, on the site that couldn't be mitigated, I feel it would be appropriate to maybe revisit at that point. I realize that the, you know, the mitigated negative declaration doesn't say that there is probability that that, they will be encountered, however, that's just my comment.
Well, I think for clarity, when we're deciding on project, at a minimum, I think we should have a landscape map that clearly indicates all the trees on the property, the ones that are to be removed, the ones that are to be remained. This isn't, I certainly, the applicant's comments are certainly credible, so by no means do I, I don't disbelieve you, but I just think, for the sake of the future, and perhaps maybe just to condition it on this, we should see a map, so we know exactly what we're talking about. You know, I was also thinking that these projects, a project like this, of this size, scale, doesn't come along all that often, and it allows us to consider things we don't typically, aren't typically able to consider. I've seen particularly of the driveway and the garage, the road and the garage driveways as being, you know, water-permeable. You know, a friend of mine who lives at the, at the end of a very long driveway that services, I think, five large residences, and they've done, you know, bricks and water-permeable, and it seems to be holding up nicely to the traffic of the, of the residents. And then, I have one comment that doesn't really relate to the details of this application, but it has to do with the, the in-loo fees for affordable housing. I went back and I looked at the provision, and, you know, for one to five units, it says that there's this 10% figure, but I suspect that when they drafted that, they were contemplating apartment buildings and less expensive housing. But now, because there's so little available space left in Memorial Bay, and property values have appreciated so much, as is evidenced by what these individual houses will cost, that allocating 10% of one unit seems a little bit insufficient. And I don't, I don't want to go into the details, but, but simple, some simple arithmetic will indicate, you know, what the retail value of this project is, and what normal profits would be on a project like this. And, you know, to require something on the order of $90,000 seems a little insufficient if we were really serious about doing something about affordable housing when an occasion like this arises. I don't deceive myself in thinking that we can do anything about this particular application, but I think we should think about it going forward, and, you know, on this kind of a project, think seriously about raising that percentage of, as the in-loo fee.
Michael?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Lauren and I were on the commission back in 2007 when this came up, and I remember the subdivision, I remember telling the then-planning staff, "This is devised to eliminate all of the eucalyptus trees." And they said, "No, no, no, no." I said, "Look at the way you've subdivided the lots. You're going to eliminate all the eucalyptus trees," because there was a slash-and-burn kind of mentality about some of the folks at that point. So, I'm glad some of them have been kept. I don't want to get into engineering issues, because this is a tough engineering site. It's very flat down there, and so I'll believe you when you say you have to grade to get things in. But my concern is, I don't think there's enough mitigation for the loss of this volume of tree cover. I don't think it can be done on the site. I prefer to discuss how to help contribute to establishing some quality habitat off-site somewhere. I think we've got some parks, and I don't know if we ever have any relationship with the high school about replacing some of the things that go there, or the state park, but we've lost so much large-scale habitat. The trees that are being put back in are going to take generations before they're even 20 or 30 feet tall, let alone the kind of scale that these have. So, I'm very concerned about the loss of a viable habitat. I love the cloisters. I walk through the cloisters all the time, probably two or three times a week to get to the beach, and I love the small scale of the lots. I love the small scale of the spaces between. Everything there counts. Nobody wastes any space. Everything is appreciated. Every square inch you have is taken care of. And I think that that's a, that's an amazing quality to have. That's some of the best housing, I think, we have, because people do care about every inch, because it's so important. So, I'm sympathetic to trying to put the units in there, and you aren't asking for significant relief from any of the requirements of the cloisters, and they actually look like good cloisters houses to me. I'm actually happily surprised that, when I saw the thing was noticed, I thought, "Well, I'll see it eventually." I was actually surprised you weren't going for a zoning kind of change. I didn't, I was hoping, I was, not hoping, I was expecting to see secondary units, I was expecting to see higher density than this. And so I was pleasantly surprised when I saw that you actually, if I look at Google Earth, and I look at this footprint, and I look at the other densities inside the cloisters, I think they're very comparable. My only concern is, it seems to me that it's a bigger issue than we're going to have solved here, as Commissioner Ingraffi said. I'm very concerned about that. $90,000 barely would pay for a studio unit somewhere, I would imagine, if we had a development somewhere for the in-loo to go to. And I don't think there's anything we can do about that. That's just a curiosity that I think that, you know, whatever it is, 15, 18,000 per house is going toward affordable housing. But I do think we could consider asking for more, more trees elsewhere as mitigation.
Richard?
All right, yeah, I, I remember, I wasn't on the planning commission, but I remember a lot of my granola-eating friends being upset about some of the trees being cut down and, and raptor habitat. And the other thing is, is with regards to the rules, maybe I got a question. With regards to the rules of egress and, you know, getting in and out, you know, there was, is that a special consideration that we're doing for this project because of the way it's located?
I think it's a pretty elegant solution, because it limits the curb cuts out onto the street, right? You don't want it, we don't want it, we wouldn't want to have them out on the main street, and then you couldn't put six curb cuts out onto the entryway there. So, this is, this is actually, I think, a pretty, again, elegant solution to the subdivision. It's basically one curb cut out onto the road, so you don't have multiple opportunities for conflict between vehicles entering and exiting, you know, what are effectively collector streets over there, right? So, you don't want that. So, this just gives one point of access. Everybody knows it's there. They'll be looking for cars in those driveways in those locations. So, I mean, it works pretty well, I think.
Okay. And then the other thing, Scott, several, maybe a year or two ago, the cloisters, they have, you know, being where they're built, there were some issues with, you know, rot from, from the foundation issues, some of the houses. I noticed that one of the houses would have to be razed because of the foundation issues there. Is this, is this in an area where that's a concern, that needs special consideration for that, or?
The applicant will be required to produce a soil study with their, with their application, and that will go along with each one of the houses that's built. So, that'll address any soil moisture issues or anything like that. Expansive soils, those types of things.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I've got a question for staff on this. We've got, on Lot 2 and Lot 5, we have 12-foot-long driveways. There's no way that anybody's going to park in that driveway prior. Is there a requirement? Shouldn't there be a requirement that somebody can pause in the driveway before they go into the garage? Shouldn't, shouldn't those driveways be at least 18 feet long, 16 feet long?
I think in, in other areas where we have that situation, then we require automated garage doors, so that they can trigger it and go from the street into there. Now, this is a private street, it's a dead-end street, and there's no parking in the street. So, I think there's a little less concern about blocking traffic, but we could certainly craft a condition.
Yeah, I'm really concerned that we've got, that there's no pausing there. They're going to be sticking out in, into the street, three or four feet, you know, on both sides there. So, it seems like we need to increase those setbacks by at least four feet. And I'll have the commission take a look at that. So, the other thing, too, is that, you know, the, they're going to be, excuse me, they're going to be removing a minimum of 17 really large biomass trees there, that are, if not raptor habitat, they're at least rap, raptor accessory buildings, you know, because they sit there, you know, that's their hunting ground. To be replacing those with, you know, Malaluka, a tea tree, and what was, you know, I couldn't even read what the other replacement tree was, that are never going to get more than 10 feet tall, 12 feet tall, I think is totally ridiculous. You know, we need to at least have a two-to-one replacement of large, large-format trees, such as Monterey cypress. I would, you know, would rather not see eucalyptus go back in, but trees that are, you know, cypress and maybe Monterey pines, that can attain the height that raptors could actually use. And they can do that onsite or offsite, with preferable, maybe, maybe a bonus if they do it onsite, do it, you know, one-to-one, or, you know, if they do it offsite, maybe do it three-to-one. But I think we need to replace like with like. We need to get, at least in the, you know, for future generations, to have large-format trees that can sustain raptor, and preferably monarchs, you know, but, so I'd like to run that by the commission, too. So...
Yeah, I think it's important, because we're going to see later on in the guidelines, you know, protect the mature landscape, you know, retain it where possible, and, you know, that's literally what we're going to be voting on later to recommend. So, I agree. And I do think that there are places, like, you know, like I said, the high school, I know when we talked to the project there years ago about the solar facilities going in there, there was a lot of discussion about which trees were, were being taken out and things like that. And between there and Del Mar and the state park, I think there's plenty of places that could be negotiated.
Could, should be required to be like coastal redwoods, you know, like, you know, coastal oaks or Monterey cypress, something that's, you know, you know, native and/or that would be adaptable to the, to this, you know, climate.
And I particularly agree, given that, you know, the lifespan of these structures can easily be 50 and 60 and 70 years, and it's, I think it's really in keeping with this board to think in terms of two and three and four and five and six generations. And so, that's a very good point, I think.
I agree. So, can we add that as a condition?
So, so what exactly do you want to add as a condition? I think right now, you're placing items on the project that places the project in a manner that's inconsistent with the CCNRs for the subdivision?
Right.
So, pointing that out, because they're going to have to get approval through the subdivision to put these things in, and now we're putting a condition on the project that can't be met.
Whether, with the allowance, that they, they could be located offsite.
Okay. I'm just making sure we're all on the same page with that. Seeing some folks maybe on the board not so comfortable with that.
Well, I think my, my biggest problem with this was that there was no specificity with the species. So, I mean, if we can specify now...
There was, on the landscape plan, there were, the... There was, on the landscape plan, there were, they, please come forward and clarify.
If you don't mind.
We'll open it up. No, any clarification we can get?
Dave Watson, the planner for the Hubers, and thank you for taking the time. In looking at the issue of specificity, the landscape plan, which is A4 in the packet, and I, it's probably harder for me to read 11 by 17 than it is for you, but in any event, what the plan called for was the 17 trees that are surveyed and are identified and are on the engineer's drawing, which is sheet 1 of 3 on the vesting map. Those 17 trees that are slated to be removed are shown to be replaced with 21 trees. 18 of those are 24-inch box, and three of them are 48-inch box of the varieties that are listed on the landscape plan, which is sheet A4.
Correct. So we have an arbutus marina, we have a seaanothis, we have a malaluka, and we have a swan hill.
And I would certainly concur with your suggestion or assessment that this is not a bulk, you know, like-for-like exchange. And part of that is, well, all of that is because we have a 14-foot-high limit for trees within the cloisters, which we can't exceed because that's a coastal commission requirement that is verboten to adjust. The Hubers would be more than happy to work with you and work with staff to find better places to put more robust trees rather than on this site. I am recalling, and I'm not a biologist, but I am recalling the biological study that we did that supplemented the original work. And this site was outside of sensitive raptor areas. In other words, there were places in the original EIR that were identified for cloisters that were set aside to promote that kind of habitat activity. This was not considered a sensitive area, and if you think about it, if you put six houses in there with ornamental landscaping and driveways and everything else, there is going to be a lot of things running around for raptors to get a hold of. So the habitat value of this site, as isolated as it is, was recognized in 96, and again with the update, that it wasn't particularly high-quality habitat area. But I certainly get the point, and we'd be more than happy to work with you if staff feels that there's some flexibility. Half of these trees could be put elsewhere, and they could be a more robust tree that would actually provide better habitat and achieve the goal I think you're looking for. So we're certainly open to working with you on that.
Okay, great. I think that's the general goal, is to replace like with like, at least, you know, if not, if we're going to remove it, you know, make it better somewhere else.
Yeah, 14 feet is a kind of a weird height for a tree, but I understand the visual concerns and respect those requirements, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have one condition. We're looking forward to it.
So do we want to, do you want to speak to how many of those trees you'd like us to relocate somewhere else?
Got a number, guys?
I'd settle for one-to-one offsite. I think over time, people will come in and do landscaping the way they want to. I think the street trees along Coral are good to have. But, you know, they don't have a specific plan yet to even talk about with the houses. This is sort of, well, we'll put a few trees back. But I think it's consistent with what I see in the cloisters, but I would like to see the street trees remain. But I'd like, I like the idea of the 17 offsite, one-to-one.
Yeah, at least. We got, got a one-to-one? Okay.
Okay, with the tree, I agree, but I still want to get a little bit more clarity on one thing, because we got this email, and has this gone through the cloisters design committee?
Yes.
Yes.
It has.
And we have a letter saying that they've approved it with conditions that they want to see building permit drawings, and they wanted a little more detail on exterior lighting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, of that.
Okay. Ted, my other issue was the short driveways, and could, maybe, could you come forward again? We'll reopen public comment. As far as those two driveways on Lot 2 and Lot 5, you got, I don't have a 12-foot car.
I don't either. Dave Watson, again, on behalf of the applicant. As you look at the plans for the houses, shortening, shortening the house or lengthening the driveway becomes really problematic. The characterization, I think, that Ms. Hubbard suggested that this roadway, 20 feet wide, actually serves as a driveway, it's going to be very, very infrequent when one person coming in is going to conflict with one of the other five residents of the house. It'll happen, and they will, they'll have to, you know, allow one to pass and the other to take advantage of the balance of space. But the, the theory was to create the guest spaces for the other sites so that that driveway wouldn't serve as somewhere people could park. I understand the idea of logistically driving in and out of the garage, but you do have 20 feet of driveway area within the private roadway that serves to lengthen that drive in there. We certainly might be a problem putting, you know, garage door openers. We would do that more likely than not anyway, to make it easier for people getting out. So, you know, from our perspective, we'd hate to lose four feet of the house because these are not particularly large houses as they stand, and they are one, limited one-story.
Okay. Any questions on that?
And I think if you look at A3 in more detail, those large triangles that we were talking about as guest parking spaces, I think that is really indicating parking outside of the garage. And so that shows that in front of the two houses closest to Coral, there is space within the driveway to park a car. And then there's two guest spaces for each of the other four houses, because the end houses also really can't park in their driveway for long, or they're going to block their neighbors' access to their driveway.
Is there, on the CCNRs, I can't remember them, but is there a restriction on parking overnight in the driveways in the cloisters?
I'm not sure about cloisters, but I know in ours, we will have that requirement. That will be part of our standard, that you won't park in the shared driveway or overnight in any of the driveway.
Okay.
But there, there are only the two driveways at this point, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I got a question. You know, one of the commissioners brought up permeable driveways. Would you be amiable to having a permeable entryway or whatever?
I think we're willing to put a material down other than asphalt that could work, but I'm going to put my old public works director hat on for a moment. When you build a roadway or a driveway, in this case, you put a course of base down, you compact that so that it'll withstand the traffic on top of it. The notion that a driveway can be made permeable means that that water has to soak all the way through the surface and through your base course to be able to truly permeate. It, in my world, it's an oxymoron to expect that roadways and driveways can be made permeable other than, you know, in situations where you don't expect it to hold up. And I've seen, the only permeable roadways that I've ever been exposed to have been the grasscrete-style version, where you actually have a concrete or plastic structure that sits in the roadway, and that does allow for moving down because you horizontally move that load in different directions with the concrete or the plastic, whatever the material is. So we're certainly open to the idea of something other than an asphalt surface, but I think the, the notion that we can make this permeable would, in and of itself, promote damage to the underlying base and create difficulty, which then wouldn't allow cars, wouldn't allow fire engines and safety requirements to be met. So it'd be tough to make it permeable where you really saw water going, you know, break it down.
But with pavers over base, over compacted base, you have a delay of the surge on runoff. So you actually have a reservoir there prior to, to it flooding up and, and running off. So you get a delay where we get, you know, we get a half an inch rain, you know, in fairly constant bursts. It does delay the runoff to the point where it, it seeps out, so you don't have as much storm, stormwater surge, you know, into the system. So even if it isn't quote-unquote permeable, there is a benefit to, to pavers.
No, and I, that's where, in my mind, I draw the distinction of truly permeable. So, but no, I do understand.
Yeah, yeah. So, so have you thought about, you know, how do you feel about pavers instead of asphalt?
Let the engineer.
Okay.
Hi, Jeffrey Amrick, Garing Taylor &amp; Associates. What Dave said about permeable pavers is basically correct. There's a problem with the water getting into the base course. Sure, we can build a rock bed and put pavers on it, but essentially what we found is it's just much more efficient, much easier to collect the water off the street, put it into a subsurface basin that has the, the required volume. So we're doing exactly what you want it to do. We're just doing it in a different way that's going, that works better with the materials that we have. So, you know, we can put pavers down, but we're, it's not going to be a pervious surface. It'll be impervious. But we'll collect the water. We're doing exactly what, what the Water Board wants us to do in terms of stormwater quality to, to take that first runoff that comes off, so we're cleaning that, and it also takes care of, as you talked about, the initial surge.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Okay, so where do you guys, okay, the questions I, I see, are you, are you comfortable with the pavers, that they're going to handle the stormwater correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. Then just, how do you guys feel about the driveways? And I'm.
I didn't see a drainage plan in here, did you?
No, I didn't see a drainage plan either. It's to be determined.
Did I miss anything?
There should be a, a composite utility plan in there. We've, in the staff report here, it's, I've just got a, a few acts of the sheet.
Yeah, it's the second GTA sheet.
Actually, if you look at the grading plan.
If you look at the roadway section, you'll see the storm.
Section AA, you can see it there. If you look at the plan view, you'll see it between 1, 2, and 5, 6 shaded in there. And then down below, the profile shows where it's located.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so he's got it in there, just here.
Oh, is it looking at block covers, too?
Oh, it's not good.
Yeah.
I got a reservoir there and a section out in there.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, I didn't see it either. Okay, I think we got it. All right, thank you. These smaller plans, it's hard to.
Can you open up public comment this round?
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll open it up for, for brief.
Yeah, I thought you did. I wasn't real sure. I just wanted to make one comment on my earlier one. As far as, in 2007, I think where it hit the bump was not CCNRs with the cloisters, but it was a coastal condition on the map that was recorded. So I think it was a coastal condition on having only one additional building site there as opposed to CCNRs in the cloisters. So if, if there's an issue, it would be with the coastal and not the local.
Coastal, okay.
Right. That, to my, best of my recollection.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. I think it will be reviewed by coastal commission, I'm pretty sure.
We already reviewed the entirety of the subdivision with coastal about what they wanted us to do because the project, the overall cloisters subdivision was appealed to the coastal commission, and so the coastal development permit for the subdivision was issued by the coastal commission. And so that issue that Mr. Martin raised came up, and so we worked through it with the coastal commission staff, and they had no issue. Said, no, you can put houses there. And we asked about the process they wanted us to go through to approve the subdivision and process it. And they said, yep, take it through your CDP process, and, and that's what we're doing. So we've been, we've been in touch the entire time with coastal commission on that. The issue with the city subdivision that came through was the city processed the subdivision map and didn't approve a coastal development permit with it. I think all of you know that a subdivision map in the coastal zone requires a coastal development permit, so that's where it ran into the issue. It was not a valid, it was not a validly issued tentative map approval without the coastal development permit because a subdivision for the coastal act is development. And so we didn't do that step, and so that's why that died. That's where we ran into the issue about it being viable, like, is this a real subdivision? Well, no, it wasn't because there was no coastal development permit issued with it.
Okay, Scott, also on this question I had earlier, I should have brought it up. On the lot sizes, are they inclusive of the right-of-way?
There is no, there's no right-of-way inside of the, inside of the subdivision. These are private driveways. The lots are incorporate, are inclusive of the private drive.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
This question's actually for Scott. Should, in the near future, that percentage for affordable housing be changed? Would that affect this project or?
No, once this project was deemed complete, it's vested in the right, it's a vesting map as well, so it's vested in the rights when this, when this application was deemed complete.
Okay.
So it would not be. The good thing is, the next round of housing element updates starts next year, so you'll be seeing the housing element update come forward.
Okay. One horrible question. Take us off on another sidebar. Do we know, there's already a plethora of vacation rentals around here, right? So all of these would be within the, our previous discussed tentative parking zone of no more vacation rentals?
Yeah, I mean, vacation rentals right now, as we said, we still have the 250 cap in place, and there's 70 on the waiting list. So, right, and then depending on where we're going, which looks like we're going to have buffers and things like that, so, I mean, I, if you're asking, could they become those? I suppose they could. But it would depend on where they're located and where other ones are located and what the final policy ends up being. Right now, as it stands, I mean, that list isn't really changing much, and so there's no new vacation rentals coming on board right now.
Okay. Okay, so we've got the one condition everybody agreed on. Do we have a motion? Somebody want?
Were we going to talk about the driveways anymore, or are we done?
You know, at this point, I'm, I'm comfortable they've got the side, the side parking, if you, what do you guys feel about those, those driveways?
No, I, I think the, the explanation was, was adequate, and, you know, I suppose in the, the driveway is sufficiently wide so that another car using it could, I think, maneuver around it. I don't think there's a serious safety or inconvenience factor.
Jesse?
Okay.
You okay? You guys good on the floor plans or the site plans on these for the driveway? Okay. Okay, so we got one condition. Do I have a motion? I, I'm sorry, we closed public comment.
I was wondering if you can.
Okay, please, please step forward, yeah.
So I apologize, I was out of town here.
Steve Stevens, just in terms of a couple of the comments, and I missed everything earlier, so I don't know if, pardon me if I'm repeating. As I, as I indicated in my email, there wasn't proper notification to everybody within the cloisters. All of the, everybody in the cloisters are impacted by this particular issue. It has not gotten the approval of the design committee. The only submission has been to Craig Smith in terms of the schematic. I spoke to Craig on this on Saturday, he called me. So just want to clarify that. As far as, there are a number of issues that have to be deliberated with input from everybody within the cloisters. In addition to the assessment district, there are quite a number of other issues that pertain to a land use conversion. I realize that, that we're dealing with planning here, but that's a, a integral component which is germane to this discussion. And I didn't get an opportunity, as I said, other than talking to Nancy briefly before I left for LA. So I don't know what else to add other than, you know, I apologize, I'm at a disadvantage because I don't know what's, was said earlier, I didn't want to, you know, take up everybody else's time. But I, but I, I did want to say that everything related to the, the land use conversion and everything related to planning impacts everybody within the cloisters, and, and so that, I think, is the most important consideration, that everyone who's And, and so that, I think, is the most important consideration, that everyone who's impacted gets notified. This isn't a 100-square-foot addition to a house where you notify somebody within 500 feet. This has to do with everybody within the cloisters. This had, has to do with the original approval of the cloisters. It has to do with a covenant that was set with the Coastal Commission and the owners of the cloisters and the city. And so there are a lot of issues that, that have to be discussed and I think are most germane to, to this, this discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the, so he did bring up a couple of points. Let's see if we can walk them down. The assessments, will these lots be assessed the same as the other cloisters?
Yes.
Okay. Was proper notification given?
Yes.
Was, did we have verification from the ARC?
Yes.
Okay. So those are the three items that, that, that have come up. And you're, there's always, there's always a path that you can appeal to the, you can appeal the decision to the City Council if it doesn't go the way you like. So according to the, our rules, I think we've got those, we've got those questions. And I appreciate you come forward and bringing, bringing those up. So, so thank you for that. So close public comment again, and do we have, do we have somebody who's willing to make a motion, one way or another?
I'll, I'll work on it here, but you've got two recommendations in the staff report. Is it the top one? That conditionally approve the project by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 20-18, which includes findings for CPO-530, UPO-470, SOO-127, and adoption of the July 2018 mitigated negative declaration with contingent conditions and mitigation measures for approval of the project and as further conditioned by our one-to-one tree replacement off-site of similar species. Is that good enough?
Yeah, similar size or...
Similar size, species, growth potential.
Okay. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Would it be possible to continue this and notify everybody that lives in the cloisters of this?
Yes, if that's the direction from the Planning Commission.
I, I don't see any, anything really persuasive that's come before the Commission yet that really presents why this particular project is so different from any other project and notification of neighbors within a 3- or 500-foot distance. I realize it's a tract, and I, I am sympathetic that people are affected by this development and have an interest in it. But as to an obligation on the part of the applicant to inform everyone in the tract, I don't think it goes that far. And I can imagine in, with such a large notice, the difficulties that that would present as well.
I would note also that we put signs at the, at the, at the site, the yellow signs. I mean, so everybody that drove in and out of the subdivision drove by them. I've just...
Three days ago.
Okay.
Posted them two weeks ago.
Further discussion?
Well, you know, kind of, one, one of the things what I, what I see is, it started off, correct me if I'm wrong on the history, all right? The lot was donated to the city by a gentleman for a fire department, for that lot. So that land use is for public health and safety. So that was found, the fire department moved someplace else, whatever. And now, then the city got it, sold it, and then they, they, they are developing, what, six homes, yeah? That's a little bit more of a, with this one lot, that's a little bit more of an impact than just a home in, in the cloisters. So I, I'm, I'm sensitive to the, to the gentleman's concern, how it's going to impact that whole, excuse me, that whole area. So that's kind of why I'm bringing up, it's more than just a house. We're doing a, a, a full-on development there on that property, so.
If I may say something, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Lucas's assessment that this is very consistent with what's, what's already there. I, I do believe due process was given. I believe we did it correctly. I'm confident that we were in the right.
Yeah.
And, and certainly, if the neighborhood's unhappy, they have the ability to appeal the project. I mean, that's, if they're unhappy with the, if they, certainly, if the public's unhappy, the subdivision, the neighbor, the neighbors aren't happy with the decision made here this evening, they can appeal it to City Council. That, that opportunity is available to them. And so they can bring that forward, and I think that's perfectly acceptable. If they're unhappy with something, they can raise it to the next level, so.
And we do have, we do need to follow a consistent format for each of the projects that come before us that are consistent. We would do the same, noticing, we would do the same review of another subdivision in another site. It's, so I, I, I think due notification has been given. So let's, let's call the vote.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
No.
Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Ngaffia?
Yes.
Chair Lor?
Yes. Motion passes. And there is an appeal process for this that, that's open to you, and I think that's the appropriate, appropriate path for you for further review. So thank you very much. Okay, we're going to be shifting to item D1. And we're, like I said, we're going to be, we'll be coming back to item B2 shortly. I don't think this is going to take very long. Do we have a staff presentation for this?
Yeah, I'll make it brief. Again, this is, we've had this item on the agenda for the last couple of meetings and haven't been able to get to it. It's recommendations to City Council to extend the use of the city's residential design guidelines. They were originally authored and issued back in July of 2015, and were in place for a year. As we were going to the end of that year, we went back to the Planning Commission with the recommendation to City Council to extend them for 24 months. That happened, and the, that period of time will expire in October of this year. And so we want to get another recommendation from the Planning Commission to extend the use of the design guidelines, residential design guidelines for another 24 months. Well, and that would also allow us time to work through an update. I know the commission is interested in getting their hands on the design guidelines after, after having used them for a couple of years now, and to update them and modernize them a little bit. And so that would allow us the time to do that. I would also note that that process is not currently in the current adopted goals and objectives for the City Council. But if the Planning Commission were to make that recommendation, I would certainly support that, that as we're, as we finish up with the general plan, LCP, and zoning code, we would have time available on the agenda for the Planning Commission to take that under advisement moving forward. So, and that could be within the next fiscal year, this fiscal year that we're in now. And we could start that, that process. So my recommendation to you is to make a recommendation to Council to extend this for 20, extend the use of the design guidelines for 24 months. And then to also recommend that the Planning Commission take review and revision of the design guidelines moving forward. That would be the recommendation.
Okay. Any questions?
I have, I received an email, it was an interesting question about how readily these guidelines could be, could be modified. And I didn't know, so I thought I'd ask.
So it's a, it's a, it's a good, it's a good question. It's, I mean, I think initially, when I first, when we first started developing the residential design guidelines, I thought we were going to incorporate them into our permanent documents. But I think what we saw as we were going through this is that's not the best idea. Because if you incorporate them into, say, the zoning code as an example, well, then if you want to change them, you have to go through our process internally at the Planning Commission level, raise it to City Council, and then send it off to the Coastal Commission to get it certified. That can be a very long process. Whereas if we adopt them through a resolution, they can be modified through a, you know, goes to Planning Commission, you make a recommendation to Council, Council adopts the changes in a resolution, and it can, it can happen much more quickly. So you can be much more, I think, nimble and, and reactive to issues that you see if you want to add policies in to address certain things that you're seeing as items come before this board. I think you recognize that. I will say, as we're going through the update process, through both the, the general plan and LCP and the, and the zoning code, that we've added a lot more design-related policies into those. We have design-specific, design-related policies in the zoning code for residential and commercial, and you have a design element in the general plan that we're going to review as the next item. So we have a lot more out of this, you know, sort of ongoing sort of review of design guidelines and, and, and input to items related to design, we've developed more policy too. So we strengthened all of the policies related to design guidelines.
Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah. So in, in that email, the, the person says about putting it into the municipal, municipal code, that, that would be, that would kind of put a hiccup in the process of being able to modify it, or didn't you go?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I was initially, again, I was initially in that mindset. When I came before the Commission, we, we reviewed this for 11, you were here, it was 11 meetings. And I think that entire process, I said, we're going to adopt interim design guidelines, and then we're going to put them into the general plan and LCP. But that process has taken about two and a half years to get where we are right now in it. And I realized, wow, it takes a long time to go through and update those. It would be better as a standalone document because we can be much more flexible in amending it. If we see issues, we can fix it much more quickly than having it in that document that has to be certified by the Coastal Commission. Because it might take us six months to get through a process from Planning Commission to City Council, and it might take the Coastal Commission another six months. So you're a year out from a change you wanted to make, and it might have been simple. Whereas if you want to make a simple change or a simple addition, we can do that and run it through the process fairly simply and fairly quickly when it just goes Planning Commission, City Council, and it's adopted by resolution.
So when, when it goes into the municipal code, it has to go through the Coastal Commission loop and then come back down?
If it was located in our zoning code or LCP, yes.
So then, Scott, you know, I'm comfortable with the methodology we've been using, and you convinced me on that. Is there any way to give it more gravitas or more weight so that it, so that we can, that we're impressing on people that, you know, when you come forward with a project, we expect it to, to follow, to follow these guidelines or to explain why you've done it, why you've done it better?
So that was actually, you know, I mean, because we've been using them for a while now and getting input and seeing how the, the Commission reacts to it. It was actually one of the things, as we're able to work through the update of it, that I wanted to work with the Commission on. And right now, we kind of put, you know, the analysis of applicable policies in a little bit of a table, maybe making that a little more robust, so we, we're doing that on the front end of things, so we get a better analysis in there for you. Was, kind of slow-played that out because I wasn't sure how much input the Commission wanted from staff. You know, I mean, you're the body that's responsible for it, we can point out the policies, we weren't putting a lot of analysis in that. We were saying, yeah, you know, in general, this might be okay, or it might not be. Certainly, we're capable of doing much more, it's just, we didn't want to take that away from the Commission. And so I said, it's fine to make generalized comments about how you feel it complies or doesn't comply, but the body that's making those decisions is the Planning Commission. So I thought maybe that would be something we could work through later, is about how we do that analysis, and so that we can make that a little more robust. Because I also see that it seems the Planning Commission wants that now, and, I mean, we can implement that now, it's just, it's, it's been an evolution, I guess, over time, so.
And I think giving that feedback upfront to the applicants, you know, prior, you know, during the submittal process, I think would be helpful too. So that they can see it, they can see it as a, a living document that is being taken seriously.
Yeah.
So that's where I'd say. Okay, do I have a motion on this one?
Do we want to open?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to get to item B2, I apologize. Do we, I'll open this up for public comment. Going, going. Don't mean to ramrod this, is there anybody wishing to speak to this item? Okay. Okay, closing public comment. Thank you for the, for that, Scott, for keeping me on track. And do we have a motion?
I have a, I have a couple of questions. Okay, so my, my concerns are making it too nimble. You know, obviously, we don't want, we want the character of our community to remain relatively static. We don't want to make it too nimble. So, I mean, I get what you're saying, but is there, is, is there a middle ground there? Is there, is there something, I mean...
Well, I mean, when I say nimble, I mean, what I described to you is a minimum six-month process to get it through Council. That's not fast.
Jesse was...
And we, and we took 11 meetings in a year to develop the policies that we have now.
Okay.
I don't imagine the update process is going to be much faster than that. When we go through the update, it's going to be a comprehensive look, and I would imagine we're going to be six months down the road before we get any decision out of the Commission to move forward to the City Council.
It was pulling teeth to get it.
It was, I mean, once, once the Planning Commission dug in, they dug in, and we, we went word by word through it, literally. But I think now you've had time to live with it, and it does need to be updated. And I think you'll have good input because you've been using it, and you're like, that policy doesn't work, we want something more along this line. Our design guidelines don't include X, we would like to have it include that. I mean, that's, I think, where we're at now. And we haven't modified it in the three years we've been using it, so.
I would just hate to see, for lack of a better term, just a rogue Council or Planning Commission come in and create chaos. I mean, and I don't anticipate that that's going to be the case, but I mean, I just, and making a document too nimble, that possibility exists.
So that's the point that I, that goes back to the other point that I was making, in that the draft documents that you have for the zoning code and for the general plan now have a lot of policy language related to design, to design elements in it. You have a design element literally in the general plan, and you have design policy specific to residential development in the zoning code. So assuming those move forward, then you, at a minimum, you'll always have those in there, and those things do have to go back through Coastal to be amended. So we have a lot more teeth than we had when we started this, which is really a policy that talked about neighborhood compatibility. And that was about it. You know, you had to, and then it was kind of up to the, the Commission to decide what that meant. Well, we developed the design guidelines, so you had examples of what it meant, so people could see it. I think all we've done since we implemented this is to create more policy and more direction and more specificity. I don't think we're going the other way. It's, I mean, there's not a desire among Planning Commission, the City Council, or the community for that matter, to go backwards. You know, they're, the community's interested in us having these and interested in us enforcing these, and they said that through the entirety of the process that we've gone through for Plan Moro Bay, so.
Joseph?
I have a couple, a couple of thoughts, and I'll, I'll be quick. With respect to multi-residential design guidelines, it seems a little thin. Is there anything in the works to produce more specificity there, or are we going to leave it like this? That's one question.
I, I think that would be a separate work product, not unlike commercial design guidelines, right? There's some, there's some desire there, and we have some implementing policy language to go do some of those things. So I think that we can make that happen over time if there's a, you know, desire to have that. Maybe as we go through the policies that are relevant in our general plan and LCP, you might want to make that recommendation that we consider putting together, or, you know, design guidelines for multifamily housing. That'd be fun.
And the other, the other thought was, I wonder if we could put something in it about a kind of a consistency in the quality of the renderings? Because there's, there's a wide disparity in what we get to look at.
We can do that separate from the design guidelines, and we can do that as part of our submittal requirements. That could be an item, maybe at the end of the meeting, you add for future discussion. And we would be happy to add something a little more robust in our application process that speaks to that. So people are on, fully aware of what the expectation is from the Planning Commission, I'd be happy to do that.
And then, and then the final thing is, with, the, the document talks a lot about design guideline implementation, and then periodically it says, "and standards tailored to each character area." Are we going to have, you know, is there a plan to actually have standards tailored to each of the 10 areas that are designated, or...
We, we could, we could potentially do that. That was an initial thought that our Chair of the Planning Commission at the time had, that was Robert Teft. And there was some idea that we were going to go down that road, and then we pulled back a little bit from it, thought we might get some additional, you know, work out of, you know, the... you know, this, the planning effort for general plan and LCP, sort of went in a little bit of a different direction with this, with the idea of maintaining the design guideline, you know, document as a separate entity. So certainly, as part of the update process, that's fair game, I think.
I'm not even suggesting we should do it, but I see the language in there, so I just, we should be consistent as to what our approach is going to be, and if we're no longer going to do those 10 different standards, then we ought to modify this, as suggested, we're not going to do that.
I think that's all part of, you know, getting our hands on it to do the update and getting authorization through council to do that, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's better to have it than to not have it, and if we can't modify it now, at least, you know, we can modify it. I probably spent way too much time looking at some things I would modify, but my only concerns are, I think it still talks too much about facadeism instead of the three-dimensional quality of a project in a three-dimensional city. We are very much hillsides and views and vistas, and there's simple language changes that when we get the projects here, and they're very lot-specific, we're able to help the people understand some of those things. But I think it's still pretty ambiguous, which I think that's one of the reasons, you know, and I'm a big advocate of, we should have design guidelines for every one of those places, I think, because North Moro Bay is different than the beach tract, and, you know, you look at the cloisters with how tight their CCNRs are, they probably have the strongest design in town because it's so tight. And I'm not one for usually wanting to have restrictions on architects, but I don't mind restrictions on non-architects.
Yeah. Okay, let's, we ready for a motion on this? We'll move it forward, we're going to see this back again.
So I move that we adopt Resolution 70DAS 16.
Oh, I have to apologize, I forgot that I changed this, that to permanent approval, to permanent approval of the residential design guidelines with the request that council authorize the Planning Commission to work through updating it. So we don't have to keep coming back and reauthorizing them every time.
Okay, with a?
Well, I thought it was, well, it could be two years. I actually, when I wrote it in here for the recommendation, it was to make permanent approval, and then we would be updating it moving forward. I apologize for that. I had it one way and then changed it at the end, I.
Okay, do we want it to be renewed within two years? I mean, reviewed within the two years?
You can make the recommended, yeah, approve it and then have it reviewed, you know, reviewed and updated within the next two years, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think I would like to see that as a condition on it.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, as we grow more confident with it, we could probably elongate the term of renewal, but initially, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You know, just a kind of a follow-up comment, what Michael was saying, I think what the topography of Moro Bay, and I think that's why neighborhood compatibility is such a subjective thing, and so that helps what he was sort of, kind of mentioning, that helps kind of quantify it, yeah.
And it can be block by block or side of the street, you know, relatively, too, so. Okay, do I have a, do we have a clear motion?
I don't know if there's a second, but I'll second, I don't think.
Yeah, there wasn't a second. So, Scott, do you want to clarify what the motion is so that we know what we're voting on?
So I would, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend permanent approval of the residential design guidelines to city council, and then that the council be, that you request the council direct the Planning Commission, and maybe within the next 24 months, to update the residential design guidelines.
Okay.
And that's essentially what it says here on the recommendation, adding the 24, within the 24 months, so there's a timeline there.
Is that what you understand on the motion?
I'm tempted to move just whatever Scott said, yes.
Second's good. Okay, let's call a question on that, then. Do we have any discussion or further discuss? I think we've, further discussion on that?
I don't think it would change anything.
Okay, let's call the question on that, then.
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Commissioner Sodowski?
Hi.
Commissioner Barone?
Hi.
Commissioner Rafia?
Hi.
Chair Little?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item B2, and I apologize for that, for having D1 interjected in there. So do we, can we have a staff report?
Just about, just about. Amy's getting set up here.
Okay. You want to take five?
May I?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and take five here while they set up. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. We're on case number B2, Plan Moro Bay, general plan and local coastal program update, and our, do we have our staff report?
Sure, yeah, I mean, kind of exciting, where you're getting your first look at Plan Moro Bay. It's been, you know, about two and a half years in process to get to this point, so that's kind of exciting. I think we'll jump right into it since we, you know, kind of have a limited amount of time this evening and moving forward, so I'll turn it over to Amy to start the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, it's been over a year since we were before you, so made a lot of progress, I'm sure you've been following. I'm going to give a brief introduction and remind us, you know, where we started and where we are at this point in the process. And then what we did with the general plan advisory committee, and if it's all right, we'll do this with the Planning Commission as well, is to give an overview of each section and then receive your comments on that section or element. So I'm seeing at least some nods, so that seemed to work well. And we'll see how far we get tonight. We do have another meeting scheduled later this month to continue the discussion. So just to touch on some key points about the entire project and document, this is an integrated general plan, local coastal program, including the land use plan, and that means that you don't have two separate documents like you do now for the general plan and the LCP. We have talked about this and proposed this approach to the coastal commission staff as we've gone through the project, and you will see in the document where something is both an LCP issue as well as a general plan issue. It will be noted with a Moro Rock icon, and there is an explanation of that in the introduction as well. We also have divided the document into two main sections, and that would be the two groupings of elements that we call the blueprint and the green print. The blueprint focuses more on the physical development of the city, and that's a very general statement. We do go into the, more of a specific overview of each element in the document. The green print is more focused on conservation. So the blueprint is three of the seven elements, and the green print is four, sorry, no, the blueprint is seven of the elements, and the green print is five of the elements, and I'll go into the specifics of that a little bit later. We also have taken an approach to the entire document. This is based on the community vision as well as some of the funding that we've received from the coastal conservancy and coastal commission, and that is to look at the approach to resiliency in each element, so you will see that in each element as well. So we started in early 2016 by gathering some existing condition information, both in terms of the background topics for the general plan and looking at the vulnerability. So we did what we called the community baseline assessment, and that was presented to the GPAC as well as, it went through the process to be approved, and that is now an appendix to the general plan, land, local coastal program. We've done some significant public outreach, and that has included workshops, a couple of surveys, stakeholder and focus groups. We've had study sessions along the way with both the Planning Commission and the city council. We've been meeting with the GPAC since the beginning, and I believe we've had about 35 meetings with them over the two and a half years. We also did what we called the key issues and policies report, so this was where we took what we heard in the input and what we identified in terms of the background assessment, and brought that before the decision-making bodies to provide more input on some preliminary policy language and direction. We also looked at the land use alternatives, so this was 10 sites within the city and four study areas outside of the city limits. We received input on from anyone who wanted to come and give input, and that was also part of the survey. Those areas were identified as areas that have potential for change or have the greatest interest, and then those have ended up having proposed land uses on the proposed land use map. And we have, we'll get into this a little bit more later as well, but we have included some of those areas outside the city in what we're calling the planning area for Plan Moro Bay, the general plan, local coastal program, that's our nickname, so I'm going to use that moving forward. So we took that information and rolled it into the draft plan. The city also received a grant partway through the process, and that was from the coastal commission, where they were looking to have some more detailed analysis done on certain topics and issues. So most of that work has now been drafted, and that focuses on some more detailed analysis of environmentally sensitive habitat areas, or ESHA, looking at how sea level rise interacts with ESHA and impacts ESHA, looking at additional models in terms of sea level rise, and that's still in process. We also took a detailed look at lateral access, so the ability to access the coast from the northern end to the southern end of the city, and how that works, and how that works in terms of actual development and design. And then finally, we also looked at lower-cost accommodations, which includes a variety of things, hotels, motels, short-term rentals, et cetera, and what is the existing situation in Moro Bay, and looking at some policy direction and working with the coastal commission on how that could be included in the document. And I should mention that nearly all of these topics have policy outcomes that is now part of the draft before you. And just lastly, we have been meeting with the coastal commission staff and checking in with them along the way. They did review the draft previous to the public draft that is before you and provided input, and then also with the various city decision-making bodies and staff. So the document is organized, as I mentioned before, into the blueprint and green print. We do have an introduction at the very beginning, as well as the vision, which includes the vision and value statement that was worked on with the community near the beginning of the project. There is an introduction to the blueprint, and then we have the land use element, community design element, economic development element, circulation element, noise element. The housing element is part of the blueprint, but the housing element was updated in 2014 on the state timing and is not being updated as part of this project. It will, as Scott mentioned, be up for update in the next couple of years. And then we have the green print introduction, and then the conservation element, open space element, public safety element, community and the community well-being element. After the blueprint and green print, we have the implementation section, and this is where the actions that are associated with the goals and policies in each element live, they are in a large table, so you won't find those actions in each element. So as we go through the elements, I encourage you to also provide comments on the implementation if you like, but we'll definitely touch upon the implementation when we get to section five as well. Section six is glossary and acronyms, and then the last piece of the document are the appendices, which, as I mentioned, include the community baseline assessment, the community vulnerability and resilience assessment, the sea level rise adaptation strategy report, the updated sea level rise modeling will be included there when it is drafted, it is still in process, the environmental, the ESHA review and current conditions mapping, as well as the impacts of sea level rise on ESHA, low-cost visitor-serving accommodations memo, lateral access memo and design poster, and the technical report that goes with the circulation element. I'll pause there if there are any questions on anything I've talked about so far before we get into the document itself.
I think I'm going to pause and open it up for public comment. We've had some very patient people here, so let's, so we'll bring it, bring it open for public comment, please come forward, state your name.
Good evening again, Bill Martinie. I saw a map, I just looked at this the other day for the first time, and I noticed LU2, which I believe is your, you know, land uses in the city. What I had never seen before is there, apparently there's a commercial overlay, a commercial corridor overlay at the south end of Main Street. This is Special Planning Area B, where it shows a red overlay of approximately 70% of the residential neighborhood there, the R1 property. Again, I've described this property in the past, there is a, the lots are anywhere from about 200 to 50 foot long, they go from Main Street down to the bayfront, about 10% or about 30 to 40 foot wa, excuse me, on the bay is commercially zone, it's waterfront commercial, 90% is residential, and yet this map is very incorrect, it shows about 80% of the residential with a commercial overlay on it. And I think it's, probably should be corrected, like the cannery building that's in there, it shows that entire property in this red zone. The cannery, actually, 90% of that cannery building is in residential zoning. I know you've mentioned that the cannery is commercial, it's actually zone residential along with the grocery store, the old Gilbert's Market. So I think this map needs to be corrected, and it, it's kind of a misrepresentation if you actually talk about neighborhood compatibility. This area at one time did have a little bit of commercial there, you know, the cannery and the fuel dock, the boatyard. The only remaining business that I'm aware is the little boatyard that's next to us, and that's currently closing because I understand pollution, they can't meet the pollution standards, and it's closing. So there is no more commercial down in this area. I'm not against the commercial zoning, it's just almost like worthless type zoning because it's such a tiny little strip that's almost unusable. And then to get down to the fuel dock to the south, all those buildings are actually built over the water, so the actual commercial zoning, the toe of the bluff is where the water starts, and there really is no commercial. So getting back to the root cause, I think this map needs to be corrected so that it's not misinterpreted that all this residential R1 property in that area looks like it's a commercial corridor, and it should be addressed. The other thing is I noticed the waterfront commercial in here, so it has a slash industrial. I'm confused, is that meaning that you're also saying that waterfront commercial is also industrial? Because I, when I was looking, it showed it as slash industrial, and I had never heard that before. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the Moro Bay, I'm sorry, good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Carolyn Brinkman, and I'm a resident of Moro Bay. I'm here tonight representing members of the Moro Bay Action Team. Specifically, I'm prefacing the comments of other members of MBAT, and. Specifically, I'm prefacing the comments of other members of MBAT, and they will be making comments later regarding Plan Moro Bay. As a group, we have spent considerable time reviewing the proposed plan update, and we strongly recommend that as Commissioners you not approve the plan. As other members of our group will demonstrate, Plan Moro Bay is a flawed document, one which does not meet the Coastal Commission's requirements for updating local coastal programs. Again, we respectfully recommend that you not approve the plan, or at a minimum that you continue the hearing at another meeting, which evidently you are going to do. And some of our members have already left, so I'm, I'm taking over their, their comments. One problem: No amendment of the existing general plan and certified local coastal plan program has occurred. An entirely new document has been written with no reference to the existing legislation and how it has been amended. This is not permissible. The Coastal Commission has prepared a guide to updating local coastal programs, which has been emailed to each of you. It includes a very, it includes very clear instructions and models of what updates look like. The update is based on making changes to the existing certified LCP and provided, providing reasons for the changes. The pages we've given you, the page we've given you is an example of what an update looks like from the Coastal Commission's Guide to LCP Updates. As you can see, language to be added is underlined, and language to be deleted is struck with the line through it. The update gives the reasons for the amendment. This is what the Coastal Commission will require as the baseline for getting certification for the LCP update. We request that the Planning Commission either recommend denial of this impermissible rewrite without reference to what is to be amended, or continue this hearing, which you are going to do. And another issue that concerns us: The city must prepare an environmental impact report for these major amendments to its general plan and local coastal program. According to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research General Plan Guidelines, a general plan and its ERI overlap in content and are prepared as part of a single planning process. However, it appears that an ER was not prepared as part of the general plan and LCP update. The staff report for this hearing does not mention an environmental impact report. There is no draft ERI attached to the city's August 8, 2018 meeting staff report. The update cannot be approved until the EIR has been certified. It is not possible for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the council as to whether to approve the update without knowing what the potential impacts are and how they will be avoided or mitigated, and before the environmental protections have been integrated into the update.
Excuse me. Could you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you. If you wish to, to give written, to give written comments, that would be appreciated.
My name is Meredith Bates. I live in Moro Bay, and I wanted to thank the Commission for being here this evening. And I was very happy to know you were talking about trees. I may not have agreed with your decision, but we are a tree city, so you were interested in trees, and I'm glad. I also want to express my appreciation for the G-FAC members. I don't know if any of them are here, because I don't know all of them, because they did a thorough review and made like lots and lots of comments on the Plan Moro Bay. But sadly, the many workshops and the comments from G-PAC have been largely ignored, in favor of a boiler plant general plan written by a consultant. I believe the document is not ready, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Moro Bay Action Team. The wording of the Moro Bay, of the Plan Moro Bay is neither accessible nor transparent. We need to be able to compare the 1984 plan with the new boilerplate plan, word for word. The Coastal Commission has LCP guidelines, and it is required that the language be deleted, the language that's to be deleted has a strike-through and that the, I'm sorry, the language that is to be added is underlined, and the language to be deleted has a strike-through. Moro Bay citizens have a right to accessible and transparency regarding such an important document. Furthermore, furthermore, under the government code, the city is not, is allowed to integrate the environmental justice-related, quote, "related goals, policies, and objectives" integrated into other elements, but the environmental justice element is not included in the city's list of elements, and there is no discussion that indicates the environmental justice element may be integrated into other general plan LCP elements involved in this major The update must include an environmental justice element to meet the requirements of the government code. The Moro Bay Action Team requests that the Planning Commission either recommend denial of this update based on the fact that this mandatory element is missing, or continue the hearing until the required environmental justice element is included. And it sounds like you are going to be continuing the hearing. I'm not sure I heard that correctly, but maybe you could clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, could we get some help out here for the overhead?
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Hawley, and here on behalf of the Moro Bay Action Team. The Coastal Commission requires that all coastal act policies are accurately included in the local coastal program. The coastal act policies are the standards by which the Commission determines the adequacy of the LCP amendments, and adopting these policies directly into the update is important to show that they are included into the, accurately. The proposed update misrepresents at least two of these policies. I didn't get to read the whole thing. Policy 30231 states that the biological productivity of the quality of the coastal waters, streams, wetlands, estuaries, and lakes appropriate to maintain optimum populations of marine organisms and for the protection of human health shall be maintained. The proposed amendment paraphrases and misrepresents 30231 and changes the meaning of it significantly to water down the mandatory "shall" to "should" as follows. Section 30231 states that the biological productivity and water quality of resources such as estuaries and wetlands should be maintained and restored. Here, the state mandated protection of resources is misrepresented as giving the city the choice to protect resources or not when considering issuance of development permits. Under the Public Resources Code, Section 15, "shall" means mandatory. Another misrepresentation of the coastal act policy is 30255, which states, "The coastal dependent developments shall have priority over other developments on the, on the near, on and near the shoreline." The proposed update changes this mandate that coastal dependent development shall have priority to say that the coastal act allows dependent uses, coastal dependent uses, to take priority over the other development near the shoreline. Again, the state mandated prioritization of development on or near the shoreline is misrepresented as giving the city the choice to prioritize coastal dependent development or not. This is exactly why the Coastal Commission would not certify a major amendment of the county's LCP. The county proposed an amendment that changed "shall" from their existing LCP to protect resources to "may" to protect resources. The Coastal Commission conditioned the, conditioned the certification on retaining the existing "shals," which the county decided not to do. And one of the things I'd like to point out, too, is in relation to the existing certified local coastal program, can I just finish?
Yeah, please conclude.
Okay. One of the changes that it makes, and you didn't get to see this because you didn't go through the existing one to change it, is that the existing certified LCP sets, has a buffering setback area of a minimum of 100 feet, and it does not go to go lower, in any case, to 50 feet. The one that has been, the update establishes a 50-foot buffer, cut in half, for terrestrial environmentally sensitive habitat areas, and also states that "but shall not be less than 25 feet unless the city determines that this would render a lot undevelopable," which means that you could put it down to anything. So this is, this is a huge change from the existing one to the new one, to the new LCP, and we're hoping that you will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Marla Jo Sadowski, and I'm representing Homefront Moro Bay this evening. Homefront Moro Bay is a group that is interested in guidance and implementation of environmental justice policy in the state of California. We're a local organization, and we have a few things to say this evening, very few things to say about this Moro Bay plan. The highlights of what I'd like to talk to tonight is just giving you a brief introduction to AB 2616, which is Assembly Bill 2616, Environmental Justice Policy. Environmental justice means fair treatment of people of all races, cultures, and incomes with respect to development, adaptation, and implementation of climate adaptation impacts. The reason I'm here this evening is I have, several of us have an issue with the new ESHA maps in the Planning Moro Bay. The planning, the community director has, has removed the ESHA from the maps. We don't see any of the original maps that show what the designated ESHA was. There's a 1980 map, zoning map of the city for the ESHA in the estuary here. It was updated in 1987 and 1990-ish. That's, I have a copy of that. That's the only map that I'm seeing here. I don't see it anywhere in this document. And we would like to have the ESHA put back onto the map. I'd also like to say that the OPC, I don't know if Ms. Hubbard spoke about a grant that was received from the Coastal Commission for the local coastal plan. I don't know about that, but I do know that the Ocean Protection Council awarded money to the city for the local coastal plan. And I also, and I also realize that recently the Ocean Protection Council granted close to $1 million for the upgrade of the parking lot at the marina by, down by the, by the golf course. And one of the reasons that they did that, the National Estuary Program was awarded the grant, and the primary reason for that was protecting the eelgrass habitat and the environmental sensitivity of the ESHA in the Moro Bay estuary, the State Marine Reserve, and the harbor of Moro Bay. Not only has the ESHA been removed from the current maps, the last map that I saw from 1997 at a, and the citizens group that you have, G-PAC, on that, not only was ESHA removed completely from the map, at one point there by the causeway, when you come into the harbor, it's been changed from ESHA designation to aquatic resources and wetlands habitat. It's unacceptable. It's unacceptable, and Homefront Moro Bay is going to be speaking up a lot about environmental justice policy and familiarizing our community and our elected and appointed officials, as well as our city staff, on the dictates of environmental justice policy. In this Moro Bay plan, Moro Bay, there's not one hit reference on environmental justice. It is state law that this document contain a reference to environmental justice policy. It's not in there. Please don't approve this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, Steve Stevens again. I'm a big proponent of encouraging participation. Unfortunately, what you tend to see is, is people get very apathetic. They get discouraged by not being heard, by not, by, by participating in the system and then not feeling they're being recognized. This is a, a opportunity that everybody in the, in the city has a input. It affects everybody, this general plan, and, and so I would encourage that there be a more aggressive outreach program as opposed to what tends to be announced planning workshops now and then, and it, I don't think that it really does allow people to participate or to at least feel that they're part of the process. So I think it's very, very important that when people do participate, that they're heard. There's also a reliance that, that statements that are made by officials in, in the city are, are in conformity with, with, for example, I heard earlier Coastal Commission. I think those type of, of, whether it be contradictions or misinterpretations or whatever it is, be clarified so that, again, it doesn't frustrate people. I think it's very, very important that, that people feel that they want to be heard and that they feel that they're being listened, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please. Okay. Okay, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Okay, Scott, if you don't mind, I kind of made a couple of notes on comments. Can we go through a couple of them? Okay. Maybe you caught some of them that I didn't.
Yeah, I'll go through the thoughts that I have on some of the items, and then we'll go from there. So I did want to first say that this is the draft of Plan Moro Bay, so tonight is not a night that this would be approved, so probably someone else was just going to say that as well, but just to make sure that's clear. And also, I apologize, we probably should have had a slide on a little more of the big picture on the project. The EIR is being prepared. It is not out yet, and there is also a zoning, comprehensive zoning code update happening as part of this project as well. And the sections of the zoning code have been going through review, but it is not quite as far along as Plan Moro Bay at this point. In terms of figure land use, LU2, so that is data from SLOCOG, and that is SLOCOG's assessment of what is existing on the ground, and obviously there are some things that are not quite right about that, so we can see if there's a way to make some changes to that, but that is not data that we put together. And that is also why- And that is also why you saw the commercial service industrial industrial category on there. That's not a city designation. That is something that SLOCOG came up with. So I think there's some text in there that explains that while we use that data because that was the best data we could find in terms of the on-the-ground information, but it is not the proposed land use designation map. That's Figure LU3. They look very similar, so it's understandable that that's confusing. In terms of...
Environmental justice.
Yeah, so the environmental justice portion of the document is in the community well-being element, and we refer to it as environmental equity. So I think it's a good note that we might want to consider changing that to environmental justice so it's very clear.
Then why we don't have stricter changes?
Where is that again?
Do you want me to respond to that?
Environmental equity is...
Where is environmental equity again? What's that?
In the community well-being element. I'm just sorry, I'm just looking for other notes here that there's a specific response to.
We had ESHA maps.
Yeah, so the ESHA map is on the zoning code map, which is not out yet. And...
Okay. Another?
Why is it on the zoning code map and not on the land use map?
I will let Scott respond also, but that decision was made because it is something that is very much tied to the zoning for each parcel, and the land use map is a little bit of a bigger picture map, and it is something that is difficult to update, the ESHA map. So the other reason was to not put it on two different maps like it is now, but just to have it on one map so that when it does need to be updated, it's not as cumbersome of a process.
And it'll be, it's an overlay. We turn it into an overlay.
Yeah. Well, if I may, the problem I have with that is the way I see ESHA, this is a living document. The way I see ESHA is the life of this document, and the overlay should be whatever else, but the core should be where the ESHA is. And it was previously on the land use map in the old LCP and general plan update, all the ESHA was.
So, no. Not necessarily. So there was the issue brought up about the ESHA that was out on the water, okay? So that ended up being a land use classification and not an overlay in the zoning map. We've clarified that and made it an overlay. That's how we're implementing the ESHA policies that are in the general plan. Now, remember, general plan, LCP implementing document is the zoning code implementation plan. So we're dealing with the general plan and local coastal program, land use plan, tonight. The zoning code is the implementation plan for Plan Morro Bay. And so that's how we push out those policies because the zoning code is what you look to do development, and so all of the ESHA policies are pushed into that, and then we're going to have an ESHA, and we have an ESHA overlay that picks all of that up.
So, Scott, we're not reducing any of the Esches, are they?
The one issue that was, that's raised about the area where there were eelgrass beds out on the water, that ended up being, is a confusing item in the current zoning code. One, it's unclear where it came from. It's not implementing the land use map that we have now, so it's not on the land use map, and then it shows up on the zoning map. Unclear what the idea is behind that, but if you look at the policy language inside of it, it doesn't mean anything. It's not good to put things on maps that don't mean anything. It confuses people. What means something is the policy related to things that happen in the water, and so that's what we're doing in this document, is defining what happens when you have development, when you have anything that's in the water, or when you have development that's on land. We're absolutely covering all of those policies. It's just, we don't want to have figures that show information that isn't supported by documentation. That's odd. And so that's one of the things we've tried to address. Now, if there's a different way they like, people are interested in having, show that, I mean, totally open to that, it's just honestly, you look on the map, and you're like, you took it away, we lost something. You didn't lose anything because that map didn't mean, that thing didn't mean anything. What means something is the policy that's in here, so it didn't tell a story. It didn't, I'm not sure where it came from or why it was the way that it was, and that's what we're trying to make happen now, is between the zoning code and the general plan, having them consistent, having all of those policies make sense, be tied to the maps that we're issuing. So you look at them, and then you read policy, and they match. Because right now, that's the issue, and I'm certainly happy to sit down with anybody out there that is concerned about that, and we can go over it, and also, I'm happy to spend as much time as you'd like.
And I just wanted, sorry, I just wanted to add, because I didn't meet with a citizen on this same topic, too. So for whatever reason, the city's land use map that was adopted in the '90s and then updated again in 1997, has ESH, or ESHA, as a land use. It's not consistent with the city zoning map, and it's an odd way to do planning practice because ESHA in and of itself is not a land use. Like Scott was explaining, those, you know, your ESHA policies live in your land use element, and they're implemented through your zoning code, your zoning ordinance. So you would see that on the zoning map. Part of this update process is to have a more modern general plan, local coastal program, zoning code, and so it's trying to rectify some of these oddities that we have from the '80s and '90s. It in no way lessens any of our ESHA policies or requirements or protections. It just kind of cleans things up so that people know where to look, and we eliminate some of these gotchas that, oh, your zoning map says this, but you also have that in land use. And so that's, it's a bit of a cleanup, but not any less protective.
I don't necessarily maybe subscribe to that point of view that ESHA isn't land use. ESHA is the core of the map, is the living core, is the nucleus. And from there, as development comes in, in my mind, the 21st century, as development encroaches on ESHA, it needs to be more, not just sustainable, it needs to be where it restores ESHA. We're past the mitigation area. We're into restoration.
Richard, the ESHA can be a portion of a lot, where you can't have land use as a portion of a lot. So, you know, and ESHA can be an overlay. It can be a riparian area. It can be, it can be a coastal area. It can be a harbor area. If the restriction and the protections are there, it's more applicable, from what I see, it's more applicable to be targeted to where it's important.
It's all-important.
Well, it's all-important.
And the secondary thing is the development in the lot. The primary thing is the ESHA, and it should go from there. It's a mindset.
It's an explanation. It's a codification. So if the protections are there, then it's easier to target it so it can be protected better than as a full land use. And I understand, I was, I had issues with that, too, but I see the way it's going.
And I think certainly as we get through the policies and we get into those, when we're going through the general plan, let's talk about it. I think absolutely, yeah. I mean, I'm not saying the way we did it is the best, or it's, we worked on it, this is what we came up with, because we saw issues in the way that it was presented currently, and there was confusion. The public found it confusing, and we tried to, we're trying to resolve confusing items. That's all we're doing. We're not trying to change things, we do protection. That's not what we're here for. So anyway, there was a couple of other things on here.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I also just wanted to point out that while it's not on the proposed land use map, we have, there is a very comprehensive report about the ESHA that is on the city's website. So if you're wondering how something is proposed to be designated, either ESHA or not, and what type of ESHA, that's there. And another part of this work program is to have a GIS function for ESHA moving forward so that it can be updated if it needs to be, or if there is something that's not correct, that that can be fixed. And I know that's been challenging with the non-21st century version, so that's a little more background on the work that has been done and that will end up on the zoning map, if not elsewhere, as we move through this discussion. Go ahead, Scott.
I know Ms. Holly referenced policies 30231 and 30255. We'll take a look at those. I'm, the back of my mind is, we've had Coastal Commission review this document already. They're comfortable with the format that it's in, by the way. They reviewed the administrative draft and gave us comments, and out of those comments might have been actually one of these, we might have gotten some of the language back from them that reflects that. So we're going to check into it one way or the other, and we'll make it correct, and if it was something that we got back from Coastal that's different than what the actual language says, we'll find out from Coastal why they did that. Seems fair. Again, and then right now, the public draft that's out, Coastal Commission's reviewing this right now as well, and preparing to give us comments here within, hopefully, the next week or so. So they've been readily engaged in looking through the process and looking at the document, and they're happy with the format.
That's page 443, just so, if you need to know where that, our policy, that section's 30231.
Thank you.
We also had reduction of buffers from 100 feet to 50 feet to 25 to whatever we like.
So we did that because we were running into some issues related to properties that were adjacent to ESHA that were, if we followed the buffer requirements, that didn't have any flexibility in them. We were creating a situation where those properties were undevelopable. We worked with Coastal staff and said, what are we supposed to do with these? You know, the policy doesn't let you get lower than 50 feet, so, or 20 feet, 25 feet. That makes this lot undevelopable, essentially is a taking. So Coastal Commission, what are we supposed to do? And they said, well, we have some ways to deal with that, and they're fairly convoluted, and really, I don't know that they make sense to anybody, but they go through a findings process that the policy's not implementable and down this road. And so when we came to updating the general plan, they said, hey, you have these scenarios in your city, write them into the policy so you don't have, we don't have to do this. And so that's what we did. You know, this was a collaboration, you know, dealing with issues and scenarios that we find on the ground that our current policies didn't work for. And again, that's part of what we're doing, is cleaning those things up and not putting policies in that if you tried to implement them, it would make something, a lot undevelopable. The city's not into going out and buying people's private property if we put policies in that, that make them undevelopable, so.
How many properties are we talking about? I mean, roughly.
I don't know.
A lot?
I don't know. It's come up a few times. So, and we worked with Coastal on development of this. They understood what we were doing and saw it, and they understood the reason why, and so they were largely on board. So, nobody's trying to hide the ball, it was just trying to deal with issues we were running into with actual development applications.
That explanation makes sense to me. However, did the Coastal Commission, by doing that, sort of force the expense and the labor on Morro Bay to make those determinations? Is when you had to agree to a 25-feet buffer, meaning, might it not be better to, if the alternatives are the property's undevelopable, cannot be developed, or we shrink the buffer, might it be better to let the Coastal Commission make that determination?
So I don't envision a scenario where, under the current policy, a project would come through, and we wouldn't allow some minimal amount of development so as to avoid a taking. And it would be inconsistent with the policy that's in the current general plan and LCP, and we would just have to state that. Because if we didn't do that, we'd be subject to litigation. I don't imagine the city would go down that road. Now, that scenario would have to present itself, and we'd have to make those decisions, and that would be made at the council level. I'm not going into that. I just don't envision a scenario where we would recommend doing that. Clearly, if you remove all the economic value from a lot, there's an issue. Our policies created a scenario where that could happen. In fact, an application hasn't come forth on a lot that we know about, but if it did, with the policy the way they're written right now, we would have to figure out some way to approve something on it, likely.
But isn't that my point? What if we did nothing and simply said, I'm sorry, the, maybe I'm, I'm not understanding the nuances of it, but could we not say, this is a regrettable situation, but the Coastal Commission doesn't allow us to allow development because of the reduced buffer, so please take up the issue with the Coastal Commission?
There's no taking it up. Once we deny it, the decision rests with the city. It's not a billable of Coastal.
So, Scott, what's the mechanism for the reduction of the buffer areas?
So, I mean, I'm just giving you the analysis as to why we're going down that road. I think it'd probably be more appropriate to speak to it when we got to the policies.
When we got to that?
Yeah. I mean, otherwise, we're getting out of order. I mean, I was just trying to answer the questions of why we did it. We can have a more robust conversation once we get to the policies.
Okay. The other item was basically an overall, why don't we have a comparison, a side-by-side comparison? We've talked to this before, but can you go through that again of why we don't have a side-by-side between this one and the previous land use?
Yeah, like you said, this is not the first, you know, this was something that was decided upon early in the process, and it really is because of the age and of the documents and the feedback that we received from the community of the fact that they needed to be completely reworked. And so when you have a situation like that, it is pretty difficult to track changes. We definitely reviewed and brought in existing, you know, Scott was just talking about, an existing policy that's been altered and under the proposed policy. So that's what I'm remembering.
Yeah, I mean, I think largely also, we're combining the general plan and LCP into a single document now. The format's entirely different. It would have been unwieldy to try to do that. I understand why people think, normally, if I get a document and you amend it, I can go strike through and change text, and it's read totally easy to follow. Entire format of this thing has changed, the policies themselves have changed, we've integrated the documents together. So I don't envision, that would have been very difficult to carry through, if not impossible. It wouldn't have been done well, I can say that. It would have been very confusing to read because our general plan and LCP policies mirror one another, right? But they're not entirely the same, and then now we're combining, those two documents are separate, represent 1,100 pages worth of documentation. We're putting them into one document. I honestly don't know how that would work.
And I would just add that the last LCP amendment that the city did was in 2014, and so as some of the public commenters provided, that was a situation where we had strike through, and we had deletion, and, you know, consistent with LCP guidance. We updated the entirety of our housing ordinance, which is a chapter in the zoning code. That works out fine, but like Scott said, you know, we have 1,100 pages of general plan and LCP, and because this is a modern era, you know, 2018 general plan, we'd be essentially striking through 1,100 pages of redline, and then, okay, here's your new document. And that's not really usable for the public.
This process is consistent with the Coastal Commission's approaches and recommendations on how to do it?
Correct. They've given us input to the, you know, they've given us input once on the entirety of the document when it was an administrative draft format, and now they're reviewing it again. And I mean, they've not said, they've been completely comfortable with it, and that's not one of the comments that they made to us, that this is not acceptable. They said the format seems pretty workable.
Okay. I think that's most of the public comments that I saw.
I just wanted to say, I think the, as I read through this, this is a very aspirational kind of document. There's a lot of things here that I chuckled, I say, we don't do that. It'd be nice to do that. We should do that. And I think this discussion of the ESHA is one of those things. I totally understand the tactical, you know, hand-to-hand combat in the cage that has to go on when somebody's with a developer on their parcel, but I think the very first document somebody sees should be that we prize our environmental setting here, and we are going to protect places by having a land use that is no use, and that's the Esches. And I think that's the complete key to what happens on the North Embarcadero, as we look at knitting between Route 1, 41, and the North Embarcadero. And I think we've seen the subdivision that's over by the nursing home off South Bay Boulevard. The ESHA that's there makes those lots more valuable, not less valuable. So to me, it's not an impediment, it's an attractor. And it's an attractor that rises to the point of, at least diagrammatically, it should be shown, these are Esches, I think. We have an aspiration to protect these settings, and if you're going to come in and develop here, you need to be aware of that, either as an attractor or something that you're going to have to deal with in these tactics that we've got developed somewhere else. So I think it's a real mistake to have our environmental setting and not come up front right away and say it. I know it's reinforced in all sorts of different pieces that I see that we'll get into, and I appreciate, but we didn't have a chance to talk about the zoning part about ESHA. We never got to that discussion over the last few meetings. So this is the first time it's really come up, and because it's being referenced in the first part, I think it's absolutely... And because it's being referenced in the first part, I think it's absolutely important to know, at least I think, I tend to agree with Richard, I think it ought to be in something diagrammatically upfront. And in your Section 3B in land use in the blueprint, you have a chart. They don't have page numbers, so I'm not sure what to say. Maybe they're down in the, it's 313, 314, you've got environmentally sensitive habitat areas as a land use. And so, it's like, well, okay, I know we're on the knife-edge on this as to where it should be, and there's different reasons, but I would just say, err on the side of it being aspirational, that we want these things understood and protected, rather than something that's just another technicality to deal with. Because I've seen project after project, the last however thousand years I've been on this commission, where people have degraded these things even after they've been put in conditions on projects. And I think that needs to be acknowledged, that this is something we want to protect. I think it's actually 315 is where it shows up. But again, I'm not sure what the exact context is there, but we're talking about it as land use.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, as I understand what your, what staff's saying is, ESHA can't be a land use designation because it has to be R1 ESHA or R4 ESHA. Is that my understanding, is that combining district? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily. It's just, it's the, ESHA as a land use doesn't, as a land use or as a land use classification like an R1 zoning district, doesn't necessarily make sense, unless you have like large areas that can be, you know, that designation should be placed on. Unfortunately, what we have is it, our ESHA traverses several zones, so it doesn't make any sense to do that. It makes sense, and it covers lots that have development on them, residential lots in many instances, or commercial lots or whatever they are. So, that's why you use an overlay, because it crosses zoning boundaries, and it crosses on the lots. Like, you don't want to split zone things. I think we've had conversations about split zoning and split land use, wanting to remove as many of those as we could, because that's confusing. You don't want to split lots with that type of thing. But the way to apply it to an area in general, like, say, a drainage or a creek, would be through the overlay process. That's how you do it. Say, "Hey, here's a drainage, and going out this far, this area is going to be the overlay where you have to do, where you know you have to do the environmental studies that go along with the ESHA policies. You have to do the biological analysis to determine what's there, to determine what the appropriate setback is for any development." Because it could be different by lot, depending where you're at.
I guess I'm confused between an overlay and a combining district. So, like flood, if an area, if a lot has a flood problem, is that a combining district or is that an overlay?
Depends on how your documents are written.
And how is our document written? So, I mean, if we have a flood zone, so, trying to think of, area's in a tsunami zone here.
We have a tsunami inundation area.
So, are those, is that going to be an R2 flood?
It's just, I mean, it's based on FEMA maps.
Okay.
It's not a separate zoning classification.
I mean, am I equating the ESHA to the flood correctly?
Yeah, I mean, again, that would also be similar to an overlay. Like, it's, like, that flood area can cover different zoning, different zoning sites, and only portions of it, right? You know, like, if you think about the existing wastewater treatment plant site, the flood zone doesn't cover the whole thing. It covers a lot of it, but it doesn't cover all of it. And so, in those areas, as you were, you have to raise things above the base flood elevation, and you have to get those certs, and you have to go through that process. That's the process for flooding. For ESHA, you have to go through the biological analysis to tell you what's there, to tell you what the appropriate buffer is, and to come up with any other mitigation that might be associated with it, related to construction hours and that type of thing. Because maybe you have raptor habitat, like we talked about earlier, or something else. I mean, you have to do the analysis to figure out what the appropriate, you know, implementing, say, conditions are.
I have a thought. I don't think there's any question that the, an ESHA map, collection of ESHA maps, is really useful in the zoning section, because there, you really have to operate with those limitations. But I also think, you know, it might be, it might be useful to have that collection of ESHA areas in the land use area, but it could even be a separate map so that it accomplishes what it's, what we all seem to want, which is to sort of broadcast that we care about preserving these unused lands. And I kind of understand it's a non-use in a land use section, but that's a little bit analogous to saying, you know, zero isn't a number because it's zero. Just having the map there might satisfy what the other commissioners.
Yeah. I was laughing when you said that, I was laughing at them. It's your fault, you have to stop. So, all good comments. I think, you know, once we hop into the land use section, what we're talking about, I think we get into that. I think we should probably jump back into the presentation, unless there's other questions that we haven't answered, because we're sort of running far afield from where we should be at this point, taking things out of order and start, maybe go back to, unless there was other questions you wanted us to answer that came up from the public, I don't think there was.
No, I think that was, I think we covered it, as far as I could tell.
Okay, so I think we're going to hop into the introduction section, and let's start going forward.
Yep, let's do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, in the introduction, we have the purpose of why we're doing this project. We explain the combined document that I already touched upon. There are statutory requirements, so local, regional, state, et cetera. We have a very brief set of information about Morro Bay. This is excerpted from the community baseline assessment, so it is a definitely high-level or a short version of what is in the community baseline assessment. We talk about what is included in the planning area, and we'll get into the maps of that in the land use element. And then, how to use the plan and how it's organized, which I explained a little bit about already. I'm happy to take questions on any of those things, or anything else on that section.
Scott, how do you want to handle the G-PAC comments? Do you want to take them under advisement, or do we need to go through them here?
So, I think it's worthwhile for the, so, the reason we didn't take G-PAC's direction and update the document is because it's very expensive and time-consuming, and we have a limited budget. So, we can only produce so many of the documents before we run out of budget. I'm literally going back, because we're adding all of these additional meetings, because it's taking longer to get through the thing to City Council at our next meeting to add budget, to add meetings, so Amy can attend, and Martha can attend for zoning code and those types of things. So, we're sort of at the extent of our budget, you know, for this. So, we have to be cognizant of that. So, that's why we gave you the information that gave us in the table, because we have some constraints there. It's a, it's a very expensive proposal to go through and reissue, to keep reissuing the document, so we gave it to you here. And I mentioned to you, you know, personally, that it'd be good if you stopped for each section and took a look at the comments that G-PAC made. And in general, we can deal with them, but it would be good to see what you thought about them as well. In addition to providing your commentary, that'd be helpful, so.
I actually didn't find much in the first section that, you know, I really wanted to change, till we got to section two. Did anybody see any of these? Most of these, to me, seemed like, you know, just word changes or just an idea as different, and I didn't see anything really critical.
Actually, the only thing I wanted to say is, I think sphere of influence has a ring to it, to the general public, that is totally false. I mean, it's sphere of hegemony. It's something you think you're going to annex, which means, that's really different than throwing the giant open space thing around the old, is it Chevron property, the 300 or 3,000 acres, whatever it was, which, because it's like, hey, that's going to be in play, we should be thinking about it. And I just wondered, and again, it's water under, over, through the dam, whatever the thing is. When we looked at the planning issue, the planning edge, we don't have our wastewater treatment plant site on here. I mean, it's...
That is going to be added in the next draft. That was something that was caught since the draft came out.
Yeah, because there's aspects of the adjacent parcels and things. I don't know what is implied by the nature of the way that's gone forward in terms of what we're going to have to take into account. And there's always been this discrepancy between places that we provide services for. There's people on 41 corridor that we provide police and fire protection for, I'm pretty sure. And water? I don't know how...
There's, there may be a few. I mean, the service thing is mutual aid agreements that we have with the certain jurisdictions.
I guess the thing that really concerns me, and I think I said it before when we had this discussion, is that when you look at the sphere of influence, the thing that scares me the most is, the county's growth plan is to put growth at the edge of the developed areas, which is right on the edge of our town. That's a stated policy of the County of San Luis Obispo, and they've got a very pro-development group there now. And so, if we're going to be absorbing development around our perimeter, and it's not part of our planning area, as to this may show up between now and 2040. I like the 2040 thing, that's far enough away, I won't be here, I don't think, knock on wood. But, you know, somebody's going to have to take that into account. So, I love the idea that the sphere of influence doesn't necessarily map the planning edge, but it strikes me as very, almost disingenuous to not have parts of 41, parts of that area that goes down, what is that called technically? Is that still Quintana that goes below South Bay before hooks back into Route 1? You've got the veterinarian and...
Churro Creek.
Yeah, yeah, there's some properties down there. So, I guess the disconnect between service proximity, you know, I just wonder why the planning thing, and again, it's past time on this now, but why we didn't go down farther?
So, the planning areas came out of the review of the land use map. You all remember seeing it. We brought it before you, you made recommendations. I think we had a joint meeting with you and council to review it at one point, and then you made a recommendation on forward to council, and council adopted the draft land use map. So, the planning areas are all those on the land use map, all those light green areas. And they just represented areas where we had interest outside of the city limit, like those things that are around our borders, that are along the corridors, that are on the Chevron properties, because things are happening over there, and most of them, hopefully, toward the preservation end. But we wanted to say, why we included that potential sphere of influence that picked up some of those lots, is because we want to preserve the backdrop of our city.
Exactly.
And then, looking at the policies that the county had, and talking with county planners, we're saying, "Okay, you have policies to talk about ridge development. Do they apply to those ridges there?" "No, they don't apply to those ridges." "Oh, okay, that's a problem. I need to let, you know, General Plan Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, City Council know as part of this update, so we can take proactive measures to include those areas potentially in the sphere, just if they want to, for preservation purposes." So, we preserved that backdrop to the city. We don't want houses at the top of those things, and the public's told us that through the outreach process that we've gone through. You have all said the same thing. We don't want houses up there. Any of the houses would be pushed down the slopes, be closer to our houses, like, say, along the Panorama area or something like that. We don't want them up on the ridges behind us. We want to preserve those. We want that to be open space, undeveloped till sides. And so, we put, you know, that's why you have the SOI where it's at. And then, we extended, because we were interested in everything that was going to happen on those Chevron lots, so we put the planning area out there. That whole, all of that is, was included in the review for the city sphere that Slocock adopted a few, maybe six months ago now. And so, anything that happens in those areas, it happens in those areas, the county will send us notification for development applications or anything that happens in those planning areas.
But, excuse me, so why didn't we include, and this is what I brought up before, why didn't we include the Highway 41 water basin in our sphere of influence, seeing as we are going to be using it for a recharge area? So, why don't we have 41 out as part of our water, you know, basically, you know, our watershed basin?
And that might be something that gets changed later, that's just not a direction that we were going, and wasn't a discussion that we had as part of the process. We looked at these things, they said, "Yeah, that's fine to put it in the planning area because we want information related to anything that happens out there." It wasn't something that we were, said, "Hey, absolutely, we want to annex this area into the city."
Right.
The designation for the land in that area is agriculture. Even in the areas where we proposed to put our SOI, those areas are largely agricultural as well. And we don't have any intention to change the land uses, propose to remain the same. You know, allow a single-family lot, a single home on those lots. We don't want development of them. It was really, it's really for preservation purposes.
But even in that area, there was a proposal for a, for a children's hospital annex out there, a children's hospital that was supposed to be out there, that kind of came through and, you know, out in the county.
Was interesting.
So, just because of that, that would be an incredible, we would either have to service it, or they would be using, you know, they would be drawing an incredible amount of water from the basin. Shouldn't we have some say on anything that happens out there as such?
Well, adjacent to us, if we were providing services to it, we would have had to say in that, yeah.
But if they're drawing the groundwater out of the basin, you know, that's going to impact whatever we do further downstream.
Yeah, I mean, this is the extent, the map that you see is the map that the council was in favor of. If you want to make recommended changes to it at some point, that's great. I would prefer that we do it when we get to it, though.
Okay.
Just note that, though, because I think it's almost like you want to look at the watershed, is what we should have, is our sphere of influence, not just land ownership. Because I could see the same people who are concerned about a location for the wastewater treatment plant being concerned by certain types of agricultural uses that could go on that site.
So, there's an issue with declaring something SOI. You're basically saying, "We're willing to annex the property." And, not that it would happen this way, but the way the law is written, if you include it in your SOI, the person that owns that property can go to LAFCO, they don't have to submit an application to us and request that the annexation take place, and LAFCO could process it without RSA. Not that, I don't think that would ever happen, but you've noted a pro-growth sort of desire on the Board of Supervisors, so all it takes is three, and then it can happen. So, again, I don't envision a scenario where that would happen, and I would imagine that would be one heck of a fight, but the way that it's set up is, you have to be careful where you put it, because that's what you're saying. If you put the SOI there, you're saying, "Yep, we want to annex it, and we're willing to provide services to it, and that's what we want to do." And so, you need to be really careful with it.
We're going to end up providing services whatever goes there. And what concerns me the most is, if somebody digs a well there, like Commissioner Lewis said, they're going to be drawing off the aquifer that we're, in theory, trying to restore. And we don't have any say about it, because it's outside our sphere of influence. I would just say, because those types of issues impact in the way we look at our portfolio of resources over time, it would have been interesting to have included them in the study area, that's all. If we look at a different point, let's see, say some more about that.
Are we still, can I reference Table 1-1?
Yep.
Okay. My question, one of the things that was referenced is the...
Doors to this public meeting are locked.
I'm sorry?
The doors to this public meeting are locked.
They shouldn't be.
No, they shouldn't be.
Okay, thanks.
Anyway, on Table 1-1, one of the things I want to bring up, again, is environmental justice. I happened to be at the Ocean Protection Council meeting when they allotted that 900,000-plus to NEP for the parking lot and the stormwater runoff and preservation of that eel grass. And the reason, the reason, there were six projects that were approved, and the reason that Morro Bay got approved, that project and a Quincy Jones project over in, on Quincy Jones Boulevard in LA, were that Morro Bay's a marginally disadvantaged community, okay? That's why environmental, oh, sorry, that's why environmental justice is a big issue for a lot of residents here. Because of, what makes this a small town is the diversity, not only of, you know, we don't have a lot of diversity of race, but we have a lot of diversity in income, we have a lot of diversity in age. And so, I think that in that table, environmental, you know, what did you guys call it in here? Something else?
Environmental equity.
Yeah. It needs to have, it needs to be environmental justice, because that is a key term that's used in Sacramento, and, you know, I also was at the, at a meeting at the Strategic Growth Council at the end of the month. And that, again, huge amount of grants go in to disadvantaged communities. And if we, by having this in there, we can open ourselves up to a lot of different grants, especially when it comes to climate change adaptation.
The other point I would make... The other point I would make about the first part is, when you look at the past, and you start with the Spanish, we're missing our indigenous peoples that have to be in there. You can't make that mistake.
Okay, let's see if we can get to Chapter 2.
Okay, so, Chapter 2 is the vision, and it is the shortest chapter, I believe. It includes the creating the vision section, and this is about the process that went into the vision, as well as some of the other work, community outreach work, and then the actual vision and value statement that was previously approved before this draft came out. So happy to take any questions, comments on that chapter.
Any questions on community outreach for this?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. You know, when we talk about community outreach and public involvement, I sat on that, the, where was it, the Water Reclamation Facility Citizen Advisory Committee. And then recently, the lingo has changed to the, it was Action Committee now, somehow it got changed. But, these meetings, they're held at 3:00 in the afternoon. A lot of our older people, they have doctors and stuff, they don't make those meetings. Our meetings were never that populated. So, being, when you have these meetings like we have right now, okay, this gives the opportunity for, a lot of times, that's the only opportunity, public has a chance to come in and say something. So, you know, the G-PAC, I appreciate all the work that G-PAC, but I've talked to some of the people, and, you know, they, for one reason or another, can't make the meeting, or get, you know, be involved in it. So I think that we have to be very careful when we start saying, you know, like, if we're going to have workshops, or we're going to have that, you have to make it so it's general populace can make it to them.
Yeah.
I don't know that there'll be a better place to say this, so I'm just going to say it now. I kind of agree with a lot of the public comment we had today about the comparability of these two documents. I came into this process really late, as you know, as everybody knows. So I had a real tough time deciphering what was old and what was new. I don't, I understand the logic, I understand the explanation, and the only thing I could come up with, and this is an off-the-wall reference, but this is the only one I can think of, so California Energy Code is about like 45 pages. The explanatory notes for the energy code is like 800 pages. So I know it's, I know we're budgets, budgeting is an issue, I know we're running out of money. Maybe if we had some very specific questions that the public could submit, and we could respond to those questions in written form, that may be a little bit more transparent. And that's just my thought, and we'll leave it there, and we'll go on. But I just wanted to, I didn't know there was a better time to bring it up, so.
But, Jesse, through this process, too, there's been surveys, there's been, you know, there's been people sitting at, you know, at tables at, you know, at the farmer's market. You know, there's been outreaches, we've had, I've been to two or three of them. And so, and then we're going through each section of this document, and the public has a chance to come forward. So I think there is, you know, I don't know, I, there's a lot, this is a pretty deep subject, but there has been a lot of outreach, if people have been willing to take advantage of it. And anybody can do a written comment for each and every one of these items that comes forward, and we review it. I review all the emails that I get, don't understand all of them sometimes, but I review them, and I take them into account. So I think there's a lot of, there is a lot of opportunity, but once again, the more that we can get, the better, but there's got to be a limitation, too.
There is a lot of, a lot of one-on-one that's gone on, and I think the public appreciates that one-on-one, but, you know, having the same question asked 10,000 times may not be the most efficient use of our time. So if we have these, if we have a mechanism where the public can submit a question, that could be placed into a document for future reference, and, you know, say, well, what did we say on November 18th about that? We could say, oh, yeah, we said this, this was our intent. It may not be spelled out here as clearly as it could be, and we don't have the time and energy to keep revising, revising, revising. Maybe we can put some explanatory intent-type informal documentation together.
An FAQ?
I mean, so, we could take a look at correspondence that comes in moving forward. We could take a look at correspondence that comes in moving forward and attempt to address it, you know, in a written format on an ongoing basis, I suppose. It would be, you know, it would probably be, you know, similar to a table or something that we would have to, you know, put it in. And maybe after you have several of the questions answered, then you're just responding to those, saying, see answer to C1 above, or whatever. I don't know, it depends on how much input we get, how much effort that's going to be, and how viable that is. So I'm unsure, you know, what that would look like, I'm unsure of the value of it. I'm open to it, just not sure, you know, what that would look like.
We had, when we reviewed the EIR of the wastewater treatment plant, they'd gone through and answered and responded to each of the questions, so a format like that might be, you know, might be helpful. I don't know if we have the budget for it or not, but...
So we could, like I said, we could start looking into that, maybe we'll, you know, follow up after the meeting and talk internally a little bit, and see if we can't come up with some idea about what an option for that might be. And then maybe start rolling it out between now and when your next meeting is, and so you could take a look at that. Because we have some correspondence right now that we could respond to, and we could see what you think. I mean, I'm happy to give folks, you know, as much feedback as we can. You always want to have the room with a lot of folks in it that want to give input, but I mean, the reality of the situation is, we've probably had 50 opportunities for the public to have input, I mean, for the project, and they've given us a lot of good input that resulted in the documents that you see before you today. These things weren't developed in a back room somewhere, they were developed by input based on the, you know, the workshops that we had, the stakeholder interviews that we conducted, all of the G-PAC meetings, and Joint Planning Commission, City Council meetings, it's based on all of that. That's why we have finalized documents, draft for you to review now, is taking all that input. It doesn't do any good for us to go into a back room and write a document that we think is great, it really needs to, and we think it does, reflect the will and the desire of the community.
I think, I think what my point was, it's become clear to me, as I talked about this with the community, transparency has been, hasn't been what it could have been. And agreeably, the documents were, as you say, hard to, to, you know, to strike out, you can't have 1,100 pages of strikeout, I get that. And I just think, wow. Anyway, I didn't know there was a better place to say this, maybe we should move on. But anyway, that's my take.
Well, I don't know that we should move on, I mean, I think having a conversation about how we respond to the public is important. It's an important concept, and it's something that has been coming up every meeting, right? I mean, well, we're looking at not just related to this, but the zoning code portion of it too, right? I mean, we're getting input from the public, I don't know what the desire, if they want something else, maybe, you know, and I'm open to trying other things. I'm just, if one of you suggesting that as an option, I'm willing to pursue something like that, and you could take a look at it at our next meeting to see if you're interested in that. Does that sound like something that addresses the concerns that you've heard? Because you all hear from the public as well, I, you know...
I think the critical thing is, this is a draft now. This is the thing that's going to move forward, just collecting things, and people saying, oh, I should think about the, that's different than seeing a draft. This is the thing that's going to move forward. So I think that's why the desire to know, why does it look like this? And I think when you start to get that third and fourth time you've heard a question, it's worth FAQ-ing.
Okay.
Why does it look like this? Why did we two do documents? Why isn't ESHA in the land? You know, these things are really, they're not predictable, you never know what's going to happen. And just because somebody raises a concern doesn't mean, when you weigh it against everything else, that it's going to be included. But I think the idea that this is very, this is a thing now, this is a real thing.
Yeah.
So I think we have to be patient with listening to what people say, because there are, this, I was going to say, you know, that wonderful section there, that community values, that's the aspirational page. That's almost the thing we ought to be putting on the wall of City Hall and saying, this is what's in this document. That's what we're trying to do. Everything else really doesn't matter, that's what matters. And those are some really challenging statements, based on the way we do things now. And I hope we can do with this.
Yeah.
But that was some pretty good stuff there.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm hoping we get more pointed, you know, comments on the document moving forward, and more specific commentary about, hey, we'd like you to add this, or we don't like the way this is worded, or those types of things. I mean, those are things that we can, are tangible, and we can, you know, we can address. I mean, we're getting some input, you know, and you've seen it, so, I mean, like...
You know, Scott?
Sorry, I just, I had a follow-up on, for Commissioner Barron. So was one of the points you were making also, that if someone had a question about where something is from the old documents, or what happened to the existing language, that we would be able to respond specifically to that?
Yes, so...
Okay, because that's a little different than what we've been talking about.
Right, we kind of, I started on one road, and we went down another, but that's, and that's fine, that's what we're here to do. What I was getting at was, okay, so if something changed, well, a lot of changed, something specific has changed, and we get the same question five, 10 times, maybe we can have an explanatory document saying, here's what it said, here's what we, here's what it says now, here's why we changed it.
Because I think, you know, like Scott said, we can discuss further the idea of like a comprehensive change guide, but I think your point of, if there are certain things that we get asked about repeatedly, like the ESHA map, then that's pretty straightforward in terms of responding to those kind of questions, and I'd be happy to do that.
You know, I think this is kind of akin to the typical process at the federal level, when they're going to propose a series of new regulations, and they take public comment, and they accumulate it all, and when the same, when the same comment keeps reappearing, you know, well then, maybe it comes before us, and, you know, we come to some sort of an understanding of... Yeah, I just have this feeling that there's this unspoken fear that something has changed or something is left out, and it's not for the better, okay? Well, the natural response is, well then, read the document very closely and resolve that doubt. And to some extent, that's true. I mean, if people are really concerned that there's a difficulty in comparing the old plan to the new plan, line by line, I mean, well, they should, in fact, sit down and, you know, make that kind of an examination, or collectively get together in a group and have somebody do it and present their, you know, so...
Now, and then, to get totally off track, having, being able to read the page numbers would help.
And you'll see that in the G-PAC's comments.
Yeah, G-PACs are the same thing.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, section, oh...
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of follow up on, you know, we, you know, I, when I look at, for me, when I look at this, we were looking at module this and module that, and you know, I think, you know, it's kind of almost like a Petri dish sliver. But when you look at this, this is going to be the bible for development for our future generations. And so I look at it, with it presented this way, you could step back, and you look at it kind of holistically, okay? And then, when you see, and a lot of people are, like, we have a lot of artists here, you know what I mean? They look at things differently. And when you look at it this way, things trigger to what you see. And that's why, when I, when, what we're doing here, it's very important, and I understand the budget and stuff like that, but we, you know, Moro Bay's character is here, and people love a lot of that character, and so they just want to make sure that we don't lose the fabric of our community, because there's a lot of subjective things here, and that we're trying to quantify. So it isn't as so straightforward as, you know, I appreciate your position, you know, it's difficult, because, but that's why I think it's, you know, it's important to understand that we have these G-PACs, and, you know, these meetings and stuff, but it's a little different when it all comes together.
This process is meant to be iterative. I mean, that's, by nature, that's what it is, you know, and it was exciting for us to get the, you know, the internal draft out, so we could all start looking at it, closely look at it, and then it was exciting for us to get the public draft out, because that's when we, like, did we do okay? Did we hit it? Because we think we did, but did we? And that's kind of what we're getting now, like, oh, yeah, and then some people are having questions about some of the way we put things together. That's good, because if we didn't get that input, then we finalize a document that has things that are unclear in it, which is exactly the opposite of what you heard me say 10 times earlier, was, we're trying to take the document and remove the ambiguities out of it, and the disconnects, that's what we've been trying to do. So all of the input is valuable, especially when, if we're not representing something or making something clear, we need to know that, because that's what makes the document good. And those are the things that we've been working really hard to remove from our existing documents. So I'm happy to get as much critique input as we can get, you know, and all it's going to do is make the final product better, right? Yeah.
Okay, Section 3?
So Section 3 is the blueprint, and it has an introduction, which is 3A. And I will briefly list the elements again. So we have the land use element, community design element, economic development element, circulation element, and noise element, and then by reference, the housing element, which is not in here. We did inadvertently, or in error, include the community well-being element in the text in this introduction, but that's incorrect, so that will be changed and moved to the green print. So any questions on this introduction?
On community design, so Scott, have we determined, I mean, we've gone back and forth on this, you know, we've got our residential design guidelines. Are we going to go 10 blocks and do community design for each of our 10 planning blocks? Or are we going to do a commercial design guidelines that's going to overarching all of the areas? I'm still not clear how we're going to handle that.
So I think the idea is that we're going to do, have commercial design guidelines that apply, probably because we've broken the city up into four areas, probably by those four areas. We have, we have design direction in here, we have it in the zoning code that relates to generalized commercial, and we have it in the downtown and waterfront strategic plan, it's specific to the downtown area and the waterfront. We'll incorporate all of the referencing into that final, that document that comes out of that process. And so that's the way I envision it, I think it's good, we have a residential design guideline, maybe we expand it to include multifamily. And then maybe, then we have a commercial design guideline, and it's broken up by the four commercial areas that we have in town, that we've already identified, mapped, and those types of things. I think that's what it's going to look like, and it'll build off and implement the design policies that are discussed in here and in the zoning code.
And is that budgeted for this process here? I know it was on the work list.
We don't, it's not part of this.
No, but, I mean...
It'll be, it'll be, it's implementation stuff, it'll be implementation things, so it'll be things that we put in our goals and objectives for future fiscal years to develop and implement out of our goal-setting process, and we budget against those. So the one thing that I had mentioned to you was, let's make the recommendation to council to update the design guidelines now, when we're done with this, let's move into that. And that can be, and we can do that internally, because that's, we developed it, right? Next fiscal year, we'll probably be, still be working on it, potentially, or if we're not, then we'll say, hey, when we're done with this, let's do commercial. And that might be one of the things that we budget against, because maybe we need some consultant help for some of those things. And we might end up needing some of that for the update to the residential design guidelines too. I have some discretionary budget to get some things that we might want, if we want some exhibits prepared or something like that. It doesn't have to only be done by staff, so it's going to be like that. But it'll come out of the goal-setting process that the council puts together, and Planning Commission will have input to that, because you're... And planning commission will have input to that, because you're gonna make suggestions to what you think your work program should be. Your work program for this fiscal year was pretty full. It involves all of the land use documents and stuff that you're reviewing right now, so. But we're gonna be done at some point in this fiscal year, and so maybe you'll have more capacity to do some other things.
I think it's already in, on the goals. I think it was already set for, for the goals, if I remember correctly, but if it's not.
I have to go back and look at it now. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, so any other questions on 3A?
It's 3A, not 317.
31 to 34, I think.
I, I just have one, just a comment. You know, I was at the Strategic Growth Council meeting last month in Sacramento, and one of the things that I recognized is the, there's a, a large disconnect between the universities, you know, they're getting a lot of grants for like circulation and, you know, like climate change adaptation and, and transportation and, and the circulation element. But there's a disconnect with the overlap on how it relates to like economic development and jobs. And one of the things that they were doing, they were doing bike routes for this or that. But, you know, we, we need to, this is just a comment, to, there's that gray area where one of the things I suggested, for instance, is, you know, you've got your transportation element, and, you know, they're getting millions of dollars to do these studies and blah, blah, blah. But what I see is to address climate change and, you know, sea level rise and climate change, you know, yeah, we have to talk about, you know, and greenhouse gas emissions and getting those levels down. One of the things that we could look at, and I'm not, it's in this, it's in this area, but it overlaps several of the areas, is like, for instance, contractors, contractors that do work hire local people that do work. Maybe getting a point system for them because of greenhouse gas reductions, they could integrate and get a, a credit or whatever, not a subsidy, but a, a credit, like a quota credit for the greenhouse gas reduction in doing those things. And I think that it's, it's important that if we're forward-thinking, because this is, you know, this, this document has to be forward-thinking, has to be, California is moving quickly on, 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 you know, dealing with climate change and sea level rise and, and greenhouse gas sequestration. And we, we as a local agency, it'd be, we should be thinking in that direction and, and, and looking at the overlap with that. Do you kind of get what I'm saying, Scott? Kind of?
We, we, you know, we, in the development documents in front of you, we obviously use the Sea Climate Action Plan and provided, you know, this is designed consistent with implementation measures in there and direction provided there. We've done, we've done that piece of it.
Right.
I think we require an updated plan. Yeah, and so we're gonna be updating that document in 2019, that year, it's coming up quickly.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just saying that, that.
So, so I mean, that might be the area looking at, what other jurisdictions are doing out there, because other, some other folks are in front of us.
Right.
They're okay, they're applying right now.
Right.
We're in the process. So, you know, the, some information comes out of that process to, you know, come up with better policies and do things like you're talking about. I don't know that we have anything in here to really speak to that.
Well, maybe just have, just to have that in your thought, you know, while you're, while you're, while you're, we're develop, we're developing these things. That's all.
So let's move on to 3B.
Okay. So 3B is the land use element. This is, I believe, one of the two largest elements. There's a lot in this one. We may, we'll see how far we get tonight, but we can spend as much time as needed on this one. I'm just gonna quickly go over what is some of the high points, and we, then we will discuss. So there is an overview, and somewhat to your point, Commissioner Sodowsky, there is a section in each element that talks about the resiliency approach, and this is in response to this being an issue of concern both here at the state level and in terms of the funders of part of this project. So we've talked about how each element addresses resiliency, and that's not only in terms of the environment, but it is in terms of the economy and the social fabric of Morro Bay. So it's a little different in each element, but you're gonna hear me repeat that, because it's in every single one. And that is definitely, that's the reason that it's in there. The next major section is measuring and characterizing land uses. So this is where we have figure land use two that was brought up during the public comment. This is the existing on-the-ground information from SLOCOG about what is built in Morro Bay today, or not built in the case of things like open space. We have table land use one, or LU1, and that is the proposed land use designations. And so figure LU2 is on page 3-9. Table LU1 is on 3-13. Further in that section, we have the proposed land use map or diagram. That's on page 3-17, figure LU3. And that is looking to 2040, what would be allowed to occur. So a lot of that will be different than what you see in the, the general plan today, but some of it will be the same. One thing that Scott touched upon earlier is that we are trying to make the zoning and the general plan land use maps almost entirely consistent. There are still some places where there's some nuance, but the goal is to not have the level of inconsistency that occurs now. Table LU2 is the actual build-out or development capacity under this proposed plan, and that's on page 3-19. And then further in this section, let me catch up here, we have some key issues related to land use. We have a diverse mix of land uses. Here is the proposed land use map. And then further with the key issues, we have growth management, coastal priority issues. So that's what is in table 1-1 that we already talked about a little bit. So that's actually those areas and issues that are of most importance to the coastal commission. And then we also talk about coastal access and the downtown and waterfront areas. And then we have goals and policies under all of those key issues. I think I'll stop there and let you get into the discussion.
Okay, let's take the first couple pages.
I wanted, this section is, is definitely aspirational, in some extent speculative. But then I, and then, but then there's a part of this that, again, this isn't, this isn't, it's not a suggestion, I just, I just have to say this. When I look at the, the land use map on 317, and I, and I see the commercial zoning designation for that property across from, from the turnabout, you know, that just, that looks to me like a, a bomb to explode sometime in the distant future, or a Trojan horse of sorts. I just want to go on record as saying that that's an artifact from 50 years ago that we need to do something about. And I, I'm sorry?
It's the Tri-W property, where the referent, where they have measure H.
Yeah. I, I keep, I've been thinking about this all week, with, you know, appreciating land values and the, and the pressure to develop, that while it may not be a problem now, sometime and sooner than we think, that's gonna be a problem that could really sort of unhinge all of our work in terms of preservation and rational development, et cetera, et cetera. I just think, I think the people of Morro Bay would be astounded, the majority of them would be astounded if they were to learn that that property, just on the other side of that freeway off-ramp, is zoned as commercial.
Again, one of the reasons you don't, I don't recommend doing zoning by referendum, but also, it's emblematic of a city that had issues going on, and, you know, there was a, there was enough folks that were unhappy with what was happening in the city, that they put together a referendum and it passed. So at some level, there wasn't a good discussion going on, and it led to that. My experience with referendums dating back to that timeframe are that there are often unintended consequences to it, and that's what you see. I mean, you would probably never zone the property to have it look like that if you were otherwise doing it today, but we don't have the choice.
Well, but my, my point, if this, if this is an aspirational document, and it is, there is this glaring problem and danger right there. And not only are we not addressing it in this plan, because it's probably not appropriate to address it in this plan, but we're not even talking about it.
It was one of our opportunity sites, so we did receive a lot of input on that site, and the majority was to keep it the way it is, even though obviously it would take a vote to actually make a change. That's why we don't have any additional policies to that end.
But am I to understand?
In the current draft.
Am I to understand, keeping it as it is could, could mean, please don't turn it into anything but agric, but ranchland? I wonder if the people really, what their response really was.
I, I meant keeping the land use designations as they are under the referendum. That's, that's the majority of the input that we heard.
But I would be curious to see that. That's, that's hard for me to, to really find credible.
Joseph, part of the problem is it would take another referendum to change it. And that may, that may be the, and quite frankly, that's, would be the desired process to do it, but we can't change that because it was done by referendum.
Well, I know that, but maybe, maybe that's an interesting legal question to examine, just what are the alternatives to rezone or downzone something, considering that, and I realize, you know, the taking of property and that issue, but then again, the owners of this property have, you know, not, they haven't disadvantaged themselves by doing something that they would otherwise have done with the property over the last 30 years. It's essentially the same as it was, so there's no, there's no great consequences from changing it to something else at this point. Sometime in the future, that may not be the case.
Joseph, part of the problem with, part of the, what happened during that referendum, once again, if memory serves me right, was there was a massive development proposed there. This was the, you know, the consolation prize. This was the best choice, and that's why it, it came through. It was a restriction on what was going to be developed there.
Again, and I don't mean to argue this, of course I am. I, I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm faced with the reality, if someone were to propose such a zoning now, there would be very little possibility of it succeeding. And that's the popular opinion now, and, and the notion of preservation and, and environmental justice, if you will, and it has taken root over the last 20 and 30 years, and it hadn't rooted at the time when these proposals were out there. And I, I think, you know, we should, we should note that opinion has changed, and we should do something to safeguard that some artifact from the past doesn't come back to really hammer us.
Okay.
So under, under this section, I would note that you have quite a bit of input also from the G-PAC, and so you might want to look at that table as well while you're thinking about commentary on your own. They did, you know, there's several questions placed or, or comments made, many of them by Melanie Smith, she happens to be a planner, so. I want to look at some of those especially, maybe.
So let, let me ask a question on this, Scott. On implementation, if we're going back to 5.5, I don't see a clear correlation of where these implementations are back into the text, into, you know, 3.
They are correlated with a goal. So there's a column that says relevant goals, so they are correlated with one or more goals in the element that they implement.
The LU1, there's no, there's no page numbers or anything that correlates back to it, so maybe we might want to use, use another reference, make it, make it clearer.
Forget my ignorance here. So I'm not familiar with that referendum or anything associated with it. So what would be required as far as access if somebody did decide to develop that?
So people that put the referendum together, I think there was at least someone that was familiar with development patterns. And they said, okay, we don't want the, the 500, 480 houses or whatever that were proposed, or whatever it was. It was a lot of housing. And they said, well, we, we know this wouldn't be a legal process if we removed all the economic development. It would be a taking. So the people that own it developed grocery stores, and so they gave it a commercial use, and they could put a grocery store out there. But they put the commercial areas in locations where it's very difficult to get to them, and makes it almost impossible to develop. I mean, that would be one of the most expensive commercial projects ever developed in the city, because it would require redevelopment of the ramp, it's Caltrans, and it would require the implementation of at least two bridges to make it work. So they made, they put the development footprints and then made, put them in the places where it's the most difficult to develop them. If you've ever been out to the side or been by it and looked up there, it really, there's a gully in the middle, and if you're trying to traverse one to the other, you'd have to have a bridge to get to one side of it. It's, it's, they were smart the way they put it together.
As opposed to a conservancy, because?
Because they had that available to them, and that was sort of the concept of the day. There were a lot of referendums that date back to that early 80s timeframe, I think, when this one was done, or mid 80s.
Scott? May I just say some, just?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
But, you know, a scenario could be a talented lawyer arguing that that very restrictive zoning, in fact, is a de facto taking, and then the plaintiff wins.
But by referendum, it's, by referendum.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't part of that property agreement for the SBB site, the cities agreed to put a road over there to Access Road? Or am I thinking about something else?
No.
An Access Road to the Tri-W site?
No, we're not, don't, to the Tri-W site where the, where we're talking about where the referendum is? Or the, or the Tri-W site where the proposed WRF site is?
Yeah, the, the proposed WRF site, and then there's that other.
Proposed WRF site is where the blue square is?
Yeah, right. And then they, so they're, are they talking about putting a, a potential access road to that development over there, that are, the one we're talking about?
No, we would, no, no, no.
No, they're not.
No, absolutely not. The road will go in from where it comes underneath the freeway there, it'll go up to the site.
Right.
Just South Bay continued, right?
Yeah, it'll just continue up South Bay, underneath the bridge, it'll access the square.
And that's it? There's no, okay.
Okay, let me change the subject. On 3-8, we have your, my favorite, floor area ratio. A lot of that stuff. Yeah. So you have a figure on calculating it, which is fairly clear, but I think it would also be if you had a consistent floor area ratio, and then show, you know, instead of changing the floor area ratio, but changing, you know, changing the layout on a site. So, am I making myself clear?
Yes. Do you think, I'm wondering if maybe adding a second figure that does that?
Yeah, I think so. You know, just have a second diagram that shows the inverse.
The same FAR, but with different configurations?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I gotta, I was gonna ask about that. We, we talked about floor area ratios with respect to second stories and stuff. Is this?
So, so floor area ratio, as it relates to this, is a requirement of the land use element. It's the law. So when you develop land use, you have to have the, the amount of development that can take place on the site. In our current, LCP doesn't have that in there, and so you're required to put it in there. in there. And so you're required to put it in there. So that's why, that's why this is here. And it's, it gives you an explanation about what it is. It's a requirement. We have to have it in there because it tells you what you can do in those locations. And that's just state law. So that's what we're doing.
So this just addresses the lot coverage, correct? Yeah? Pretty much?
It's, it's not lot coverage. It's floor area.
Floor area.
It's the amount of development potential that you could have on a lot. So what are we putting there? And so that, that tells the story moving forward about the development potential. And that dovetails directly into our circulation element and the amount of development that can place and the amount of traffic that can be generated from it. And as we get into the discussion, moving a little bit further down the road, there's, we talk about the transportation component of this. Development of some of the larger pieces of property in town could create problems if you were developed to the maximum densities. Because we have a 100 acre site that has a power plant that is no longer operating. If you redevelop that site, it almost blows out the traffic in every intersection, you know, within reach of it. So it's interesting. It ties to that, but it helps us, you know, lay out what our circulation element is.
So by default, the higher density neighborhoods have, have an FAR established by setback implied and height limitations. So it's an inferred FAR as opposed to an explicit FAR like you're talking about here. Because I think some, some people are going to say, why aren't we adopting it for the residential? And what you're basically saying is we're continuing the policy of it's inferred by setbacks and height limitations.
Lot coverage.
And design guidelines.
And lot coverage, yeah.
Lot coverage.
In residential, I mean, we have density associated with that. So it's the number of units per acre and that type of thing as well. It tells you how much you can put in an area. I mean, how many units, that type of thing. One of the, one of the things that comes out of this is we started putting some of those mixed use overlay things on there to allow you to put the residential upstairs. And we allowed it to be to the higher density. So that's another thing that kind of is interesting. When you, if you build to the max, then there's, there's impacts to lots of things related to those circulation thing. And we'll have, we'll have some conversations about that when we get there. I don't want to jump the gun on it. It's just, I'm sort of prepping you because we're going to have this conversation because you're going to look at, we're going to probably have statements of already consideration related to traffic in here in our EIR associated with this as a result of looking at development potential based on the land uses that we have now.
So this map that's up here now is on 317? Is that the 317 map? Nicer colors on the projector, by the way, than on the book. But.
Figure LU3.
Yeah. So I guess on this one, it does show that the plan area goes out 41. So that's a discrepancy from some of the earlier maps. I like this map better.
Yeah.
So you're saying this is different than what's in the introduction?
Because this includes the 41, Route 41 properties going east of the city.
Okay, we'll check that. That, they should be the same.
This is the 2040 map, isn't it?
What page are we at?
I think it's 317.
But if you don't have, if, it shows, illustrates how More Bay, Plan More Bay goals translate into on the ground land uses. So then it has to be in the plan area in order to have an aspirational title like that.
Yes.
I'm confused.
Which map is this?
LU3 is saying what now?
LU3 is the goal of More, of Plan More Bay.
This is the proposed land use diagram, yeah. So it has the planning area, the proposed, proposed future sphere of influence, the existing sphere of influence. No.
What's, what's the large green?
As well as the city itself. So the, well, it's not all green, but most of it is that light green agriculture. And that is in the planning area. So that's outside the city limits.
Yeah, that, that's more reflecting what I was asking about in the earlier map. So I think this shows that we were at least paying attention to having some desirable perimeter around. There's, there's all sorts of pieces in here, though. Is it really going forward with the existing wastewater plant as open space as opposed to visitor serving commercial?
So that has to do with the portions of it that really probably can't be developed with substantial infrastructure, because they're in the tsunami inundation zone and in the flood zone. Other portions of it, there's potential to do other things there. And part of the conversation that we had about that was, hey, why don't we look at putting some more sports facilities in potentially? So recreational open space? Because we have the ball fields at Lila Kaiser, right? And we have the high school that has, you know, those facilities, including the new pool. And then out here, maybe you could have soccer fields or something. I don't know. So it could be, that whole area could be that, you know, kind of a, an area where you could have events, soccer tournaments, or softball tournaments, or those types of things. And so that was one of the conversations that we had in relationship to changing the land use there.
It's also something that, I mean, I don't want to debate every parcel in here that I've got questions about. But it just strikes me that you've got the lightweight RV parks all up and down Route 41. That's the cheapest thing you can put in that makes access to the least available people to rent something more expensive. And if it's a flood problem, they're gone because they just roll out. So, you know, it, it just seems to me counterintuitive that we, we cut off a revenue source when we're at a beachfront location, when we've got the Escha that we can work on farther up the street. Just a point.
I think the idea was to have balance there, was to have both. I mean, that's what came out of the outreach that we did, right? It, it came out of, hey, yeah, let's accommodate that. And we have some of the visitor serving that would accommodate the, the existing use that we have there and expansion of that potentially. As you move inland, there's some areas, as you move inland, that are out of the flood plain where you could put maybe a hotel facility or something like that. And then the idea was, oh, and in some of these areas that are lower line, maybe that could be your recreational open space, you know, improvement. And things we're talking about like ball fields or something like that, that don't have issues related to flooding. So, but it doesn't have to be that. It could be other things. It just talks about it being open space, recreational.
We're going to need to master, specific plan that area anyway.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what it says. I mean, that's what we're supposed to go do when we redevelop it. Yeah, correct. Yeah.
There, Smith mentioned on, I think it was on 314, on the top of the page, commercial recreational fishing. Can we put in measured, the language for measure D into the description?
On 314?
It's, yeah, 314, it's top of the table, commercial recreational fishing.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And is that?
So the approach we're taking currently is to include some language here in Plan More Bay, which I believe is on that page, that's a little bit bigger picture about what is happening with measure D interpretation and clarification. And then to include the actual standards that you're going to, things that you're going to look at as you review projects in that area in the zoning regulations. So that's, that's the approach that the drafts are taking currently.
So the point being there is, otherwise we have the measure D language in both documents.
Okay.
And we, and we just thought, oh, we know, we know we have measure D. Let's put it in the implementing document that everybody's going to look at. Everybody's going to look to the zoning code for measure D. Because when you're doing development, you have, that's what you're going to, that's the document you're going to look at. You're not going to probably look at the general plan. So we were trying to make it make sense. I, I'm not going to say that's 100% the best way, the right way to do it. It just, we were trying not to be redundant.
Yeah, it says implements measure D. So maybe that, you know, maybe we just need to?
Happy to take input on that, though. I mean, that was just, our thought is like, why are we having it twice if we're going to put the implementing, implementing portion of it in the zoning code? And that's where the language is going to rely, is going to reside then. And then we, so we take, the language measure D is in there. And then what we think it means is in there, right? When we had the subcommittee meeting and the information that came out of the two boards, Harbor Advisory Board and Planning Commission, we agreed on language that's also in there. So not only did we put the language in the zoning code, we also put how we're interpreting measure D and what we think it means. And that came out of this board and the joint meeting that you had with the Harbor Advisory Board. And so.
Do you think we need to say refer to dot, dot, dot in there for the, to refer to the next document for more?
That's, yeah, I think we could do that. I mean, I think, in fact, I sort of think that's what, Amy was sort of saying the same thing, that was what, one of the comments that we had at G-PAC was to do that too. So that makes sense.
Yeah.
This is just another stupid visual thing. But do we not in fact control what happens in the harbor down to the throat of the State Park Marina now by implication management agreement? Because it looks like our navigable waters stop and then somehow you get over to the marina. It's almost like there's an implied line across there of jurisdiction between ourselves and the state or ourselves in the county.
It's inside city limits. Yeah, I would, yeah, what Amy was saying is that's just representative of the, of the current map. I, I'd probably have to sit down with Harbor a little bit and ask him why that is.
Only because it gets into issues like dredging and some of these issues Mr. Martin he was bringing up. You know, I don't know where the resolution of some of those things are. But in, in theory, there's, there's an active waterfront happening down there of vessels, if nothing else, that, that just kind of implies that stops, which it doesn't.
You know, and I'm, hate to say it, but Mr. Martin kind of sometimes wishes things to be that are not there, or wants them to be the way that they're not historically, historically been. So.
I totally understand. I just think it's, it's, it's tough to see the, the colors not make their way down to the marina. I guess the other thing I had on the LU2 table, LU2 on 319, is the population 2040 for the commercial, is, is that sort of the ballpark that we're anticipating for the mixed use downtown with the higher density that we're potentially talking about?
That's based on the increase in residential that would be allowed in all commercial designations. So it would include the downtown and then a few other places like the neighborhood commercial, North More Bay.
So when we look at the, the height changes that we were talking about in the zoning, this is anticipating, that's what the population would be. So if people want to know a factor of what's the implication of the housing downtown, we're talking about 10% more people potentially
Yeah.
being housed here because of that.
This number hasn't been updated since the revisions happened during your review of the zoning. And I think that the number would decrease if I'm understanding that correctly.
It'll decrease because as you recall, we reduced the footprint, the things that could go that, to 37 feet, right? So this number will go down some. Yeah.
If we're, if we're there, I have questions about this table. Are we, are we going to move on to?
Yeah, we comfortable move on to 319?
So as the state implements mandatory housing law, how would this affect this document? How would those laws affect this document?
Well, currently, the city is in compliance in terms of their housing element and housing element numbers. So the amount of residential that is allowed or anticipated is more than enough to address what we know now in terms of what the state wants. The sixth cycle for the housing element is coming up. And our understanding is that the numbers will likely go up across the board. So having some room to allow more residential in general is probably a good thing moving forward from the state housing perspective. But that is, More Bay has historically grown very slowly. And we don't see a lot of reason that that trend is going to change anytime soon. So I guess that's answering your question, both from the state's perspective and then, you know, kind of the on the ground reality. But if you're asking about more than just the RINA numbers themselves, the state is going to ask cities to, you know, justify why they don't approve certain types of housing projects more. And so that's something that every city will be responsible for basically showing their work in terms of what gets approved. It's a little more complicated in the coastal zone. But I guess that's my short answer. It's, there's a lot of different bills and, yeah.
This is a complicated area of the law right now. And there are many bills trying to, making their ways in different areas about trying to force us to provide the housing. I would say in many ways, we're lucky we are in the coastal zone. They, they haven't tried to roll back the authority of the Coastal Act as it relates to housing. They've not wanted to deal with that to this extent. So leaves a lot of this in our hands. We are starting the conversation. Literally, I have a meeting tomorrow at Slocog to discuss updating of the regional housing needs assessment numbers. We know. Literally tomorrow will be our first one that leads into the next housing element update. So I mean, it was just, yeah. And with the legislation you see coming down the pike for cities is, you know, you, you have planned, you know, zoning available for this housing, and it's allowed by right if you zone the areas for it. And you don't get that, you don't get a say in it. They're not saying that to coastal communities, though.
Okay.
But it's going that way for others.
One of, one of the things I want to comment on that, heard in meetings up in Sac, and I always kind of bring up, you gotta have the infrastructure to support that. And that's, there's a disconnect there. And that's why I, you know, I hope that our staff is.
It is a great comment. And absolutely, our growth is predicated on the infrastructure that we have in place now, in place now. And then we, the good thing is, we're looking at that infrastructure and what it takes to reach growth potentials. And the growth numbers that we have in this document are the ones that they're using in the one water plan and those types of things. So all integrated, everybody's looking at the work that everybody else is doing to make sure we're, we're all telling the same story. Because if we weren't, everybody's going off in their own direction. We've come up with all different kinds of numbers. So it's a great point and one we've been cognizant of. So, yeah. So thank you.
Can I get a clarification? I'm still bouncing back and forth between the implementations and the, and the goals. So you've got policy LU 1.1. You know, in the implementations, you've got LU dash 1, LU dash 2, LU dash 3. Have they correlated directly? Or how are those numbering systems devised?
The implementation actions are only correlated to a goal. So not every policy has an implementation. It's not a one-to-one policy to implementation action. So there may be some goals that have five implementation actions. There may be some that have 10.
Okay, so goal LU1 in.
So the goal that is above all of the LU 1.1, 2, 3, 4, 5?
It's in the blue, and then your policies go down below it.
Correct, yeah.
And then your implementation is LU1 land use. So that's, all of these policies relate to the one implementation on five for LU1?
So you're asking about implementation action LU1?
Yes.
So it corresponds to goal LU1?
Okay. So then policy LU 1.2 correlates to LU1 on, on the implementation?
Yes. So if you look at the particulars, you can sometimes see that there are implementation actions that are very much tied to one particular policy. But in some cases, that's not, it's not as specific. So that's why we took this approach, was they all fall within the goal, but not necessarily, sometimes a policy can have, there are multiple correlations between the policies and the implementation actions. But all the implementation actions are tied to a particular goal.
Okay. I, I guess I'm going to need some private tutoring on this. And maybe I shouldn't if it was perfectly clear. But I don't, I don't understand how these are still relating. And I won't belabor the point, but I'm having trouble going back from goals to implementation, to implementation, to specific policies.
So it sounds to me like you're like, okay, well, I have a goal here. And I have the implementation section on the back. And I look under the goal and I have seven policies.
Seven policies.
I don't, and then I see the implementation action. It's one sentence. I don't see that it addresses all of the policies.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, coming up on 10 o'clock, do we want to, to spend a while longer? Okay, so, coming up on 10 o'clock, do we want to, to spend a while longer, or how long do we?
Yeah. So, yeah, I would say, I think, I think my idea would be for you to call the ball at 10. Been here long enough. We're gonna continue this item specifically, so you're gonna make, you're gonna make the decision to continue it to our special meeting on August 23rd at 4:00 PM in the Community Center, multipurpose room.
4 o'clock?
At what time?
This is news to me. Wow.
4 o'clock.
So, special meeting on the 23rd of August at 4:00 PM in the Community Center, multipurpose room?
Does that one have a frame of closure around it? Or who's cooking?
Huh?
Who's cooking? That's what I'm wondering. Cook out in the parking lot? Get a little burgers and dogs out in the parking lot?
Go get food trucks. Okay, so, let's, we'll stick a pin in this one. And continue this item to August 23rd at 4:00 PM at the Community Center. And what, is that a Tuesday? What's the date on there?
It's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so...
If I can comment, so, we had some pushback last time we changed dates and all that. And this, so we can answer the question, we're doing this because?
Because we need to get through Plan Moro Bay.
And we can't do it on...
And we have a lot of development out. Your next, okay, so you understand what going through Plan Moro Bay looks like and what it does to your schedule and what it does to Planning Commission agendas. Your next meeting has five items on it.
Oh, wow.
Five. That's a good enough reason for me.
You've never seen five items on the agenda before. And I was looking a little bit like Commissioner Sadowski right there when I was putting them up on the board. I'm like, oh, this is gonna be fun. But it's important for you to know that you're gonna have five because you're gonna need to look at them upfront and be ready to go through them, because otherwise, we'll never get through the agenda. So, a lot of pressure on you guys to, you know, understand what's in front of you and get your comments and questions ready ahead of time so we can, you know, hit them hard, hit them good, because otherwise, it's gonna be hard to get through it. But this is what it does and why we have to have a special meeting to talk general, just general plan stuff, because we don't have the availability to put it on our other agendas, because otherwise, we only get two hours like we had tonight.
No, I'm saying specifically, we had some pushback last time on changing the time and the date and the location.
There is a contingent of folks that will always bring up anything that we do that we change. It's, you know...
But we did have, you know, that's one of the reasons why I allowed public comment on the whole, the whole module tonight, so that, so that they could address it.
Sure.
You know, so they had a chance to address the whole module.
Yeah, so, I mean, we have timelines. We have grant deliverables by the end of the year. We only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. That's why we're adding extra meetings, we're trying to get through it. I know it might feel a little bit rushed. It's just, it's taken a little bit longer to get through some of this stuff to this point, and that's where we're at. So, doing the best we can, but we gotta, we gotta, you know, push on.
No, it's just good to talk about it now so they can hear it and they can see it and they can, they can come and comment.
Scott, do you have a better process for going through this than what we're doing? Or is this just how you have to eat the elephant?
I think you had maybe secretly, what, two hours? I think we did a pretty good job. I'm happy with where we're at. I think the conversation that you have is important because otherwise, it's, you need to vet it. You need to, if you need to read some of this stuff out loud, please feel free to do it, whatever gets you through it. But I mean, you need to be comfortable with where we're at because, and we need to get the input from you so we can update it and bring you back something you're willing to recommend approval to City Council on. So, you, the more and better input you give us, you know, then that's tangible. We can take that back and make changes to the document.
Okay, great.
Appreciate the time.
And I would just add, too, that in addition to the busy meeting next time and then the special meeting, the first meeting in September, we're aiming to bring back the next module of the zoning code. So, there's a lot of multiple tracks running, and you'll be seeing the EIR at an upcoming meeting, but no date's been set on that yet.
Okay. So, guys, review this, be ready to work our way through it.
And that meeting will be the fourth, right? Okay.
Okay. We have, we have none. We were working on unfinished business, D1. We pushed forward. Do we have any Planning Commissioner comments?
I just want to say, I've been a Planning Commissioner for a long time, and we've had a variety of staff and people come through the political end of the spectrum. There are so many things in here that I think are really positive. Whatever this process flaws are, this has things in it that I think are really good for us and I think are great to have in print that weren't in print like this ever before. So, I think it's been well worth it, and I think it holds good things in the future. And so, whatever the criticism is, I think this is a good document that we're moving forward.
And I, you know, once again, I appreciate the public comment that we've had because that tends to focus our, you know, our, you know, our comments, and we look at it, we look at things differently a little bit, so... Okay, Community Development Director's comments?
I'll only add, I think I would mirror the comments that the Chair made, that the public comment that we get is invaluable. We can't do this process without them. If we don't have buy-in, then we're not gonna get the document adopted. I think they raised great, I think they had great questions. I think we had answers for most of them, if not all of them, but there were good reasons why we did it. But looking from the outside in and looking at what we're doing, they're like, well, why are you doing it this way? Why are you doing it that way? I think those were all, you know, valid questions that they raised, and I hope they continue to do so as questions arise, as they continue to review it. Because as they indicated, they hadn't maybe completed the entirety of the review of the document, and so maybe we'll get more input that way. That's great. To be able to provide clarity is important to the process and happy to do that, so...
Okay. So, at this point, we'll adjourn, let's see, so, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting here at 209 Surf Street on August 21st at 6:00 PM 2018. And then, just a reminder, two days after that, at August 23rd at 4:00 PM at the Community Center, we'll continue with this document.